...that is power in homes here. Project in Michigan, it's power in homes in Michigan, which is really critical. So, I want to talk quickly about our community focus. Kind of another example of folks asking, you know, what does Ranger Power do in the community? What is it like to be a good neighbor? You can say it, but do you actually do it? So, wanted to provide a couple of examples here of just our real commitment to being good neighbors, being a part of the community, and working alongside folks. So, we have examples of grant programs for local schools. And in this instance, it's a grant program for teachers, for materials for their classroom. We have examples of endowment funds for local infrastructure that we've done at our project in Iowa. And we have examples of local scholarships for students at a local high school in a project that we're developing in Michigan. So, we really are community focused, and that's how we think we set ourselves apart. So, to finalize here, I don't want to take up too much time, but I really want to emphasize the fact that we are absolutely meeting all of Fort Gratchit Township's ordinance regulations and requirements. We have provided extensive studies to show that. We've provided a checklist to the planning commission going through every single requirement of all ordinances, and exactly what exhibit shows just how we meet that requirement. And we tried to go above and beyond as well, answering absolutely any questions, providing research, offering opportunities for ways in which we can, like I said, coordinate with the local fire department. And we really believe in terms of all of the requirements, we either meet them or exceed them. And to end here, just, we are committed to the community. You know, even since submitting our applications here, we've had dozens and dozens and dozens of meetings. We have, I picked up the phone, my phone number's off here for folks that want to give me a call still. We have answered every email that's come through our project website. We offer in-person meetings. We've met at the county meeting when we were asked to come and speak about the project. We've really tried to be there and available, and as a resource for the township, and for the residents, and for the folks that are interested in learning more. So, with that, appreciate the time, and thanks.
Motion to, excuse me, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
A motion?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Public.
Everyone, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna start out calling four names, so we'll have one person at each podium, and then two on deck. So, we're gonna start with Charlie Lewis, Todd Cunningham, Donna Morello, and Reagan H. So, we'll start with Charlie Lewis. Is he? Okay, if you want to come up to the podium, when you do come up to the podium, please state your name and address, maybe we'll have three minutes to speak.
Charlie Lewis, live at 5570 North Road. That's really loud in Applewood. Oh, okay, I can start. Charlie Lewis here from North Street. My family has been here in North Street on the same property since 1876. I'm the fifth generation to farm here, and I hope to have a sixth generation coming up. We don't plan on going anywhere. I think that this use of the land is a good use of the land. When my great, great grandfather started out, he raised horses, bulls for breeding, and hay. Then in the twenties and thirties, they went to raising oats, wheat, and barley. Now, we raise, and we've always had cattle. Now we raise corn, soybean, sugar beets, and wheat. It's just a diversification of our crop portfolio. Soon, we hope to be harvesting sunshine. The land is not sold. We are going to own it. It's a lease, it's rent. There are enough legal safeguards in place that myself, my parents, and the rest of our family thought that it was an extremely good use of the land, and we are extremely 100% confident that we will get the land back in the same condition that we gave it to Ranger Power. And... It's better than some of the other uses that you could use for the land if you want to keep the rural atmosphere in the township, because it's still farmland. It's not houses, it's not gas stations, or convenience stores, or anything like that. It's still got the wildlife, it's still got the natural looking, it's just a different crop to look at. Also, I would agree with Tony about what he says, or I would agree that the environmental restrictions that they have to deal with have to be pretty, pretty bad, because I know what we have to deal with just to spread manure. So, I'm very confident that there's not gonna be any environmental contamination. That's it.
My name is Donna Morello. I live at 3840 Brace Road. I am opposed to this project. I understand possibly financially, for some people, that it might be beneficial to lease their land for a profit. I moved to this township in 2014 with the expectation to remain in a rural area, to get out of the city. I enjoy it, I love it here. Two sides of my property are rural, and both will be, in my eyes, contaminated with visual contamination of solar panels, and noise contamination. I do deal with DTE energy behind me, as well as water, Detroit City Water Plant behind me, which also has noise pollution that I didn't know when I purchased the home. But when I sit outside typically Monday through Saturday, I deal with noise pollution at night. Sometimes on Sundays, I don't know what turns off, but for a little while, something turns off, and it gets crickets, that's all I get. I deal with that minimal noise pollution now that I didn't expect. So, if I have a chance to stop any more noise pollution, that is why I'm here today. And visual pollution. I love the scenery of the farmland. It is good for the soul to get out of the city and live in that environment. I enjoy the wildlife. My biggest concern right now, today, or over the last three days, and I don't know who else wants to speak up on it and admit to the rest of your neighbors, that this is not an all-inclusive list for special land use in Fort Gratchit. I received an offer roughly three days ago for purchase or lease of my land. If anyone else would like to come up and share that, anyone else receive offers this week? So, we look at the map, we make our decision, and how we feel about this going up in our community, these big solar panels, the facilities, the battery storage facilities. And we can either make a quick buck, because $55,000 in my pocket right now, and that's your time. Thank you.
Todd Cunningham here. Todd Cunningham, 3610 Carrigan. If you need to, if you need to come up so we can catch you on the microphone, thank you, otherwise your comments can't be recorded. Did we also have a Reagan H? Reagan H? Can I have on deck Sandra Richardson? And Joseph Novasal? Sorry if I butchered my last name.
Okay.
Thank you.
If everything that you've outlined doesn't come true, if it doesn't hold water, and we're left with this, I am literally on top of this, or this surround my home. My view is gone, the noise that comes with it, if it comes with it, which we don't know, anything that's stray from the electricity being there, like people living under cover lines. All this is unknown until it happens, and once it's there, it's there. Now, is there compensation for people that are directly affected? That's about where I'm at, because the situation that my home's in, the afternoon sun, the glare, the extra heat, the whole thing, there may be other people that are that close, but I'm directly on top of just of all. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Can I have on deck Joseph Novasal? Is Joseph Novasal here?
Nope.
Can I have on deck then Diane Sherrill, 4291 Greenville? I have Austin Richardson on deck then, 4126 Cole, on the, at the open podium, on deck. Thank you. Go ahead and begin.
Sandy, do you want to? Good evening, my name is Sandra Richardson, and I'm a lifelong resident of Fort Gratchit Township. Some of you may know me at a personal level, and some of you may have met me recently in the last couple of weeks going door to door. Many times during meeting, my neighbors informing them of this project, they express thanks and gratitude that I would take time out of my day to include them in the news that they had no clue that this was going on in our township. Many people invited me in for a cup of coffee, and the information that I shared with them was the information provided by the leaflet that was sent to me with a less than 10-day notice for the first meeting. So, all the information I took around to the neighborhoods was information that was provided by the township and changed three times from our last meeting to this meeting, with differences in acreage and maps that have been changed multiple times. So, that alone in itself is confusing to our residents. I also took the time to reach out to the American Farmland Trust, who is an extremely reputable with maintaining tracts of farmlands, as any of these farmers that are trying to propose this would know. They've become very concerned, as they have identified that the best and most productive farmlands are being torn apart by industrial solar developments. Climate Policy Manager Samantha Levy emphasizes that we cannot make more land. She strongly believes we need a smart solar plan, and not hollowing out the farmlands that exist in small communities. Everybody has a right to do what they want with their land, but not when it adversely affects the rights of others in the township. The only people who benefit from industrial solar farms are the ones receiving money and padding their pockets. There are great health risks with this community involved in these developments. And I advise the planning commission to look, to get their priorities straight, look closely at these concerns that your residents have. And some of you may be protected by HOAs in your community, some of our residents are protected. My protection relies on the township, and I will hold them accountable for my protection. Also, people that struggle with sensitivity to sound would also suffer significantly from this. There have been numerous studies showing that people with vertigo, autism, and special needs will be affected by the development and constant noise that emits from these solar projects.
And that's your time, thank you so much. Austin Richardson? I have on deck Travis Richardson?
Testing. Hello, my name is Austin Richardson. I'm here to discuss the solar project and bring up the issues that I've found during this whole process. And one of those issues has been since day one, when I go to the township and ask about these solar projects, they refer me to Chiawasi Township, and how that would be a great reference source to the quality that we're gonna receive from Ranger Power in regards to the site. So, we go to Chiawasi Township, many of us have, and what we find is, when we're told that by Ranger Power and by their plan, that the noise generated by these is comparable to a refrigerator, this is the sound that we have. That is heard from every resident in Chiawasi Township. Every house that is surrounded by this solar farm deals with that all day. This is from interviews conducted from the Chiawasi neighborhood. How do you tell me that that's comparable to the sound of a refrigerator? If there's errors in their research that are that significant, what other errors are they covering up or hiding or not telling us? That should be the most basic thing that we should be able to count on, is going to Chiawasi Township and seeing these lush vegetative fences that everyone has told us will be in place. We go to Chiawasi Township, all vegetation is dead surrounding these. If there is anything, there are three-foot trees that are this tall and brown. I have photos myself, you can make whatever face you want to make up there, but that's what the vegetation looks like. It's all, it's that. It's flooded. There's residents in Chiawasi Township who have to install their own personal drainage systems to negate the flooding and the damage that's done to their land. The studies that have been provided have been provided by Ranger Power, not by us, not by our own township. The studies that have been provided, when I go onto Ranger Power's website and look at their jobs that they're putting out and hiring for, one of their leads is to communicate with the researchers and reflect on Ranger Power in a good light. Is that their major priority if they're doing this research, is reflecting in a good light on the company that's representative, or being concerned with the environmental impact and impact on the community?
Travis Richardson here? Travis Richardson?
No, he has work.
No? Um, can I have Jacob Wade? Jacob Wade, 2673 Courtney Drive? Can I have Reagan Havens?
She has work.
Rachel Hena, 3691 Palina? Rachel Henin, 3691 Palina? Can we have Shane Richardson? Shane Richardson here?
Yes, yes.
And on deck, do we have Tony Lessie? Tony Lessie, 3805 Carrigan?
Testing, testing. Good evening, my name is Shane Richardson. I am certain that this proposal violates ordinances related toward residents' safety, health, and wellness, along with lacking harmony. Last month, I mentioned this to the planning commission, and I also mentioned that all the residents of this town are taken back by not being informed about this proposal. Since our last meeting, the majority of almost 600 residents that signed the petition were still not notified about the new hearing. You have chosen to only inform individuals that live within 300 feet of this project when you can clearly hear the inverters from over a mile away from their installation. I am curious if all of you have spent adequate amount of time independently seeing the Chiawasi County industrial location. I went over there for a day and spoke with many homeowners who were furious with the noise levels coming from these inverters. Residents in Chiawasi explained to me how the company putting these panels together was burning pallets and dumpsters that caused the fire, which needed to be put out by the fire department and faced over a $40,000 fine. Another resident mentioned how an individual was stealing gas from Ranger Power's fuel reserve tanks, which led to a police chase. Just last week, a Fort Gratchit resident drove to the Chiawasi location, and several gates were wide open, which I had pictures of. How can anyone comfortably say this offers safety, health, and wellness, along with harmony for the residents, which needs to be met in the proposal? This planning committee should take pride in living next to the Great Lakes, where it is a privilege to be near. As you have recently supported campsites and parks in this area, you need to consider how you would like the future of this area to look. Ranger Power has never conducted a project so close to the Great Lakes. We also do not have any studies considering the long-term effects of industrial solar farms being put so close to the Great Lakes. As of right now, St. Clair County has ties to chemical factories, nuclear waste sites, and landfills. We are also the 13th highest county out of 83 in Michigan for cancer rates. Do we really want to add to that resume industrial solar panels? Financially, I have researched where this proposal significantly devalue homes, not to mention reduce the desire to have long-term residential living in this township. I am strongly recommending that this planning commission postpone moving forward with this proposal until long-term studies can be made. As of last week, the Fort Gratchit Township Treasury report noted over $7,900,000 in funding. I am certain that you can designate some of those funds toward independent research and cost analysis. If you need help with figuring out how to budget that, please come see me, and I will devote any time or all time that I have for it.
Tony Lessie here? Tony Lessie, 3805 Carrigan? Susan Dieter Martin, 3066 Carrigan?
I don't want to speak.
You're passing? Okay. Um, Mike Martin?
My name's Mike Martin. I live at 3066 Carrigan Road. Recently moved to this township. A few things to say, two. One is for the board, both of these for the board, let's get on with it. Okay, we know the drains that fall off of the, that are alongside of where they plan to put these panels. We also hear that the panels don't have anything hazardous. Well, I did a little research checking things out. Some of the panels have films on them, several layers of film to protect them, whatever, to help them block the energy from the sun. Well, over time, rainwater has been known to leach those apart and wear them out, and they will dissolve over time. And one of the big key ingredients that's in that they don't want to say is cadmium. Also, you have the battery sites you want to put in. They're holding rechargeable batteries, because those are Ni-Cats, nickel cadmium. Remember that, okay? That's another thing that's out there. Well, if this stuff is leaching off, the cadmium's leaching off of the, into the drains, the drain on, alongside Parker, in behind my daughter's house, runs through the Brace, the big drain on Brace goes into Lake Huron. Well, guess what's a half a mile from where that stuff goes into the lake? The intake valve for the water, the intake for the water plant. Say goodbye to all your good water down in Detroit, so that's gonna happen. What I want to know for the board, we talked about no evidence we had found of detriment to the soil. Well, we've got one of those sites right here in St. Clair County, where the vocational ed center is, RESA, there's several of those panels there. We need to have a soil sample of those existing sites, that one there, the prison at New Haven, and the prison in Lapeer. These sites have to be checked to see if there's anything detrimental to the soil. He says there's no problem with the soil. Well, I really don't believe him, because some of the things he's been caught in have been, so thank you for your time.
Angela DeFrey, 5045 Parker? Can I have on deck Steve Mack, 5684 State?
My name is Angela DeFrey, and I live on Parker Road. My property backs right up to where they want to put us. My property also backs right up to Doe Creek, a big drainage ditch that goes right down to Brace Road and out to the lake. I'm, you know, they say that they, they came here because they had some, you know, citizens that were interested. Well, who wouldn't be interested if they got hundreds of acres and they could make themselves millionaires? Unfortunately, me and my husband have lived in our home for 15 years, and we have put everything we have into that home. The hell that's getting us will destroy everything we've worked for. The sound is unbelievable. I'm one of the people that went to Chiawasi last week. And let me tell you, when me and my friends showed up there, we did not expect to open the car door and hear what we heard. We'd seen the videos online, and everybody says those aren't true, you know, and it's volume, and, you know, whatever. We were shocked, so shocked, that we spent over two hours driving around a 15-mile area, taking videos and photos to prove to you and everybody in the community that this isn't gonna be quiet. They say it's only gonna be 45 decibels. I've seen somebody measure the sound there at the Assembly Solar Area Field, and it was like in the 60 range. My question to you is, like, how are we gonna enforce that? You know, they say it's not gonna be loud, they say that it's not gonna create this kind of nightmare for the residents that live around this. What if it does? Do you think they're gonna close it down and stop producing the energy once it fill? Do you think that it's only gonna be the property that they have now? Because Chiawasi went through three phases, and, you know, I thought it was only 1,200, but I... And, you know, I thought it was only 1,200, but I've been hearing that it's actually 1,900 at this point. How much of our township do we want to devote to something like this? Because they're not going to stop. They're, they're already reaching out to other people this week. We just heard from Donna about that. You know, who's going to pay us for what we're up?
Yeah.
Who is going to take care of the people surrounding this atrocious project? Thank you very much.
Can I have on deck Sarah Beebe, 4331 Kerrigan?
My name is Steve Mahack, 5684 State Road. This homestead has been there since 1890. It's been a peaceful existence there since the time we owned it. And I want to know, just one question, how is the board going to compensate the people like us who is not going to receive funds from land leasing or land rental? Is it going to devalue our homes? Are you going to come in and reassess the home? Are you going to compensate us financially? Certainly, if we try to sell this home, once these installations are up, or even now, with this hanging over our head, there's a lot of people that would just turn away there. Who would want to move into an industrial area?
That's right.
There better be a flat to compensate them if you decide to go ahead, because we should not take a loss just because the township is going to get a small amount of the tax dollars. You know how good it'll go. What are you going to get, 2% of the tax dollars? The rest of it's going to go to the county and the state. You make it sound like, oh, we've got millions coming. Well, that's not true. You know the township gets a very miniscule amount of that. And it's not fair to us owners to sit there holding the bag after others are making a large financial enrichment. That's all I have to say.
And I have John Haring, the second on deck, 44.
Sorry, I'm short. Okay. Thank you, I'm Sarah Beebe, 4331 Kerrigan Road. I live approximately 2,100 feet from the proposed solar field. Sorry, I can't say that word. And as I was reading through these special land use permit applications from Ranger Power, I noticed something interesting. On page 10 of 15, paragraph 7, in the special land use permit application, Portside Solar LLC, they state, "In addition, the project will comply with all applicable regulations of the St. Clair County Drake Commission. The applicant will notify the Fort Huron Fire Department prior to construction, so they can visit during construction to obtain an on-the-ground understanding of the project layout and emergency access points." Did Ranger Power mean to say Fort Huron, or do they mean to say Fort Grashit? Because the proposed solar fields are going to be in Fort Grashit. And, you know, if you're not competent enough to write a special land use permit application precisely, then who knows what else they're not able to do. I just want to touch on the cadmium issue as well. My son's fishing at Brace Creek. So if things were to eventually leach into the soil, which I'm sure they will, because Mother Nature wins every time, cadmium poisoning, some of the symptoms and issues with that include renal cancer, renal failure, which is kidney cancer, kidney failure, gastrointestinal issues, neurological issues, reproductive issues, and respiratory issues. You know, Ranger Power says all these wonderful things, and, but there, there's no hard numbers or statistics, things aren't measurable, they're saying, you know, X, Y, and Z. Okay, well, how do you measure that? There's no specific numbers. And that's, that's all my application.
Can I have on deck Vance Richardson? Vance Richardson, on deck?
Hello, my name is John Haring, the fourth. My wife and I live at 4490 Cole Road, ground zero for this mess. We live in a 120-year-old farmhouse that my great-grandfather built. My grandmother was born in this house. My mother was raised there. We raised three wonderful kids in this house. That was our dream. Everything we have is in this house. Now, I know I'm going to lose 30% of its value right off the bat. Right now, if I go sell 30% of the value, that's one of my concerns. The other concern is the noise. What happens if these things get on fire? Who can put them out? And you're right, like everybody says, a mile away from this beautiful Great Lakes we have. I know on black and white, the farmers that sold my neighborhood out, I want to see these names here and make sure you guys don't sell us out either, because we'll fight for your careers if you do. The Ranger Power people here are flying by night. Who do you think's going to save them?
Can I have Jill Bartow, on deck? Jill Bartow, 4607 Metcalf?
Vance Richardson, live on Cole Road, lived there for probably 35, 40 years. Part of my family spoke here this evening. There's many major concerns regarding this project. Before I even get started, we've got just under 600 people that have signed petitions. These are signed by going door-to-door, by visiting residents, talking with residents. They want to hold on this thing, maybe stop it while you can, because the horse is already halfway out the barn. It's terrible what is going on when you go over to Chiawasi facility. I know you've mentioned time after time. Please, go over there, listen to the noise, see the crappy landscaping you would have around your home, look at the ugly seven-foot fence, imagine that around your home, and look out over the panels, and then Ranger Power, you were involved over there before you come here and do a sales job. Why don't you go back over there and fix the mess? You're going to come over here and sell yourself, and then go over there and listen to that noise, go over and fix it. Build a different station, surround it, change the inverter, but don't just come over here and say, oh, it's wonderful over there. It's not. I went over there, spent hours there too, independent of them, because I couldn't leave the noise, the racket, the devastation to the area that's over there. So go over there, please. Now, when I said that to the superintendent of Fort Grashit, don't tell me what to do. Well, by God, you've got a whole group here that want to see you go over there and get involved with this thing. It's all a bummer. Another thing, is compatibility. There is no compatibility. These are neighborhoods, these are people that live there all their lives. I've gone up and talked to elderly people. They're not here tonight, and they're walkers, they're widows in the dark. They're devastated. Their whole life they've lived there. They're devastated, and they can't sleep at night. A lot of people can't sleep at night. You're already affecting mental health. The noise is terrible. That hum goes on. You know, it's interesting, my brother used to have a parcel by Detroit Edison years ago. He had the township out there, Detroit Edison out there. Now the people on Brace Road say, yeah, that sucker still makes noise around the clock. It's devastating, the noise. You don't want this in the, you don't want this in Fort Grashit Township. You've got a beautiful township. Keep it that way.
I'm Jill Bartow, 4607 Metcalf Road, I'm in Clyde. Have only been there for a year and a half or so. I wish we hadn't bought, because had we known, we wouldn't have bought there. 100% would not have bought our property. It is, they, I, people are saying that it won't affect our property values, that's wrong, because we wouldn't have bought it. I'm also terrified about the noise. I, I just can't even imagine living around it, because what's going to happen? It's going to be across the road from me after, if this goes through. And like Vance said, I beg you, go out there and see for yourself what they're going to do to our beautiful, beautiful area. It's too close to the lake.
I have Cindy Wild, Cindy Wild, 3136 Roosevelt. Can I have Laura Campbell on deck? Laura Campbell, 5131 State, on deck?
Hi, Cindy Wild, 3136 Roosevelt Avenue, dead ends at the water plant. This, this project is of huge magnitude for a township like Fort Grashit, but I'd like to address two somewhat legal manners. Excuse me if I call you the Power Rangers, I just got a ranger card. It was odd, I went to the last meeting, and that was a fiasco, and I found it odd that the minutes from over a year of the boarding, the, the planning commission board were not uploaded to the website, magically they appeared somewhere around the 11th or the 12th of October. And they were the first minutes ever to reflect anything about solar. And I might say that you asked more questions than I did on the used car lot than you did about the solar project. Secondly, the 200 meetings that you've had with residents and the township, et cetera, some of that would seem to demand a Freedom of Information Act. The only one I believe you, there's some violations of the Open Meetings Act, by not giving the people the information they needed so that they could study this big fancy book that's full of bullshit. And I was trying to read, last time I was hoping to read, that the grounding transformers, this was in a solar projects decommissioning statement, that the grounding transformers which had leached into the under Cole Road, contain cooling fluids that have the presence of regulated materials, in other words, toxic materials. So upon decommissioning, I have not had the opportunity to read their decommissioning statement, because it just got there in September. And we didn't know about the meeting until I walked in there to be my power, my water bill. And it was my understanding from our appropriate supervisor that it's a done deal, this was late September, because they've met all the requirements. But you know what? You're going to affect three to four generations of people by making this decision tonight. And I am demanding that you say no. You can't say no. You must delay your decision until you have done more investigation, because by what I've seen, you've done none.
Can I have Cheryl Cameron, 5514 State Road? Can I have on deck Stephen Cameron? No? Okay. Can I have on deck Dan Dubrowski, 4125 Metcalf?
My name is Cheryl Cameron, and I live at 5514 State Road, where we will be surrounded by solar farms. And I feel, the first thing I have to say is shame on this planning commission for not letting anybody know about this three years ago when we started. From this point, I'm just going to get some research that I've done. This is from the Insurance Magazine that goes up to all the insurance companies, quote, "Solar farms are a fire hazard. Solar panels can be damaged by heat or flames, which can lead to fires. In addition, solar farms could generate electrical fires, something that is not only dangerous, but also difficult to contain." Next, mine's now, this is all from, from this summer, this one happens to say June of 2020. Although most solar farms can be safe to operate, they release harmful pollutants into our environment. Among the health risks associated with living near a solar farm are anemia and behavioral issues. Children are especially susceptible to exposure to solar panels as they are in their growth stage. According to 8milliontrees.com, a safe distance to live from a solar farm is 1.2 miles. And here we are, considering 300 feet for these proposed solar farms in Fort Grashit. And we and our neighbors are just, just happen to be surrounded by our, our homes are completely surrounded. Six reasons, according to an actual solar roofing company people do not want to support farms are, number one, they're an eyesore, we just heard this over and over. They kind of take up too much space, and that, that should actually be agricultural. We have a lot of agricultural area in Fort Grashit, and it should stay that way. They're a waste of money, they kill animals and ruin our environment. Five, don't, don't work like they promised, and they're, they're a fire hazard, and that's brought up again by another, an actual solar roof company. Why do we keep considering them? Solar companies promise pie in the sky, and foolishly believe all they tell us. This is all a quote from a solar roof company. We need to do our own investigation, which we have, you can tell some people have done. Okay, Argani, I don't know how to say this, National Laboratory, the U.S. Department of Energy Science and Engineering Research Center reports, "Solar power systems could potentially cause interference with aircraft operations if reflected light beams become misdirected into an aircraft pathway. Operations of solar facilities, and especially concentrating solar power facilities, involve high temperatures that pose an environment or safety risk. Like all electrical generation, generating facilities, solar facilities produce electric and magnetic fields." Trying to tell us that our land will not depreciate is not being honest. The resale depreciation value of homes within the 1.2-mile or solar, solar farm is, risk is higher than it's linked to us. So we looked at several articles to, I looked at several articles to find this. I'm reading this because that's the only way I can do this.
That is, that is your time.
Is that my time?
Thank you so much.
My name's Steve Cameron. Sorry. It's all right, go on. Live at 514 State Road. I don't have a lot to add to this, I'm totally against this. We will be surrounded on three sides, right across the road of Brace, behind us, and across the road on State. We already live fairly close to a station. It's, I'll see, two doors down, I guess, the DTE station's there. I hear that hum all the time. And it's, it's a ways away. Moved out to the country to, to see the land and have peace and quiet, and it's kind of hard for me to believe that this is brought upon us. I don't know how many of the board live, are going to live right, the planning commission and stuff, live right across the road from this.
None of them. None of them.
Doesn't look like any. How would you like to live across the road from this and have this constant hum?
And I have David Norris on deck, 3478 Grace.
My name's Dan Dubrowski. I live at 4125 Metcalf Road in Fort Grasset. Living less than 190 feet from this proposed industrial solar compound. As if county website's correct with their mapping from where the area starts in my address. What a second barn upset over his back. I was told by the township, boy, both prevent 5,000 square foot of property, of buildings can touch your property once you exceed 10 acres. I believe this solar panel stuff will exceed that 5,000 square foot. But then all those properties combined numbers on lease, which would not allow you to do this to be done. If any neighbor rules against that, then I, I definitely would rule against that. Proposal says the height of them will be full room corn stock, but also says the water will be 35 feet. Well, depending on the string of corn, you're looking at 12 feet. We're looking at 12 feet of corn, maybe 60 days in a year. We'll be looking at this for 365 days a year.
Yeah.
People are being fooled by the money the township will get. The construction jobs of the outsourced, the non-union workers that don't live in Michigan or Fort Grasset. Once that's done, money's not going to be out there. 100 megawatts for 917 acres is a, is a lot of land. Say for a power plant, about 15,000 megawatts and 220 acres, which could do a third of the state. And they had it right around front of the stuff. How, how will this change the water runoff with the solar panels? Regarding, are you going to increase the grade? So now the water's going to run off to the east of my place? You know, questions like that need to be answered. No one's anything about EMFs and the radiation goes cut off. You drive a solar panel, you're in a burn and a sidepipe explodes. And then the number one marked property on the map, they do an agricultural thing several years back where they were dumping human waste from the corn filtration plant in the pipes through that ground to produce fertilizer in the future. How's that going to affect putting those steel beams into that parcel there? I don't know if you're aware of that. You know, basically, you know, agreed by people are going to direct the township, in my opinion. You know, it's law of physics, what their reaction is a reaction. I hope we don't have a negative reaction to this, which could affect Fort Grasset. It'll be in the township. That's all I've got at the time.
Can I have Andrea Herring on deck? Andrea Herring, 4490 Cole.
Hello, my name is David Norris. I've come here to oppose this proposed plan. If my count's right, I have number 17 out of 18 that are against this, that stand in front of me publicly. So that shows a pretty good number against it, if my count's right. And my biggest concern is the noise. I'm only a quarter mile down the road and that's, that's going to affect me, so. Like I said, I want to publicly announce that I'm opposed to this. And that's about all I have to say.
Can I have Darlene Peterson on deck? Darlene Peterson, 4661 Desmond Beach.
My name is Andrea Herring. I live at 4490 Cole Road. And first I'd like to start by saying, if this solar project was such a great idea for Fort Grasset residents in our community, why haven't you township officials been shouting it from the rooftops and putting up your welcome? All of us residents and slide it through without any of us even realizing what was happening. You were elected and appointed to have your residents' best interest. And this solar plant is not in Fort Grasset's fastest interest. Myself and a friend, also Fort Grasset residents, went out and checked out the Assembly Solar Plant the other day for ourselves because we didn't want to just be someone who was going by someone else's information. There's nothing impressive about that horrible sound that comes from the inverters. We talked to people that lived in the area. They told us that sound is 24/7 and even louder at night. We were on there, there driving around for two and a half hours and I had a massive migraine by the time we finally left to come back home. I don't even want to imagine what it would be like living with that 24/7. And there's no way that you wouldn't have heard it when you toured that solar site unless Ranger Power turned off those inverters because they were heard everywhere. The amount of water that was laying around and under those panels because of poor drainage has to be a hazard in itself, let alone the gates that were left open and unattended for anyone to go through and be up close to the solar panels. I don't know how any of you can honestly say that you were impressed by the solar plant or even thought it looks magnificent based on everything we saw and heard the day we drove around the site. Now, I agree, people should have the right to do with their land as they choose, but not when it's hazardous to the environment and the community. If we chose to subdivide our property and build houses, at least the value of all of our houses and land would go up. Instead of this proposed solar plant will bring the value of our houses down. People don't want to live around these solar fields and that was also apparent by the number of vacant houses around the Assembly Plant. I have talked to many people in this community over the last month and they don't want to live around solar fields either. Plus, we all want to know, how are we going to be compensated when our wells are contaminated and city water and sewer needs to be brought in? Who's going to compensate us for the loss of the value we take if we decide to sell our homes? The five farmers are being compensated for leasing their land for this project without the rest of us who are going to suffer the consequences from this project. I strongly urge all of you to think about your residents and not just the five farmers that are going to reap the benefits from this project and please, vote no. Thank you.
Darlene Peterson. Darlene Peterson here. Can I have Randy Martinez, 5308 Lake Shore? Randy Martinez? Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have Carol Ann Hoffman on deck? Carol Ann Hoffman, off of Spartan Drive.
Hi, my name is Randy Martin. I reside in 5308 Lake Shore Road, Fort Grasset, Michigan. I'm an attorney. I am a former member of the Fort Grasset Planning Commission and former chairperson of this august body. I would like to talk about the elephant in the room. And that is the legislation that is largely passed the Michigan House and Michigan Senate. That being House Bills 5120 and 5121 and Senate, Senate Substitute S1. That deals with preemption of local control and it puts that power in the Michigan Public Service Commission. And the reason I want to talk about that is because although I'm opposed, I'm 100% opposed to preempting control over issues like this by the Public Service Commission and taking it away from your panel. That's exactly what this legislation is going to do. And it is nearly 100% certain to do that. It just passed the Senate today, Senate Substitute Bill S1. And it's going to likely, near 100%, pass the full ballot, both the Senate and the House. So the point being that what will happen if that becomes law is you're not going to be able to deal with it. It's going to take it away from local control unless there are, you only, you have an existing solar energy ordinance. I've reviewed that. It looks like it would fall within a compatible renewable energy ordinance within the meaning of the proposed legislation. That legislation is going to happen. It's going to be enacted. It's 100% certain. What happens if you deny the application of courtside solar? Guess what happens then, according to this legislation? It automatically goes to, you don't even get a shot at making a decision. It goes to the Michigan Public Service Commission. They make the call, not you. If you have, if your ordinance is a compatible renewable energy ordinance, as I believe it to be, you retain the right to make that decision. But again, if you deny the application now, it automatically goes, according to this new legislation, to the Public Service Commission, which I don't think is what anybody here wants to happen, certainly not what I want to happen. So what I propose you do, until you satisfy yourself about the effects of this new legislation, is table this, talk to your attorney, Mr. Fletcher, find out about what this new legislation would likely do, and then reconvene at a later time. Thank you. I assume my time is up.
My name is David Hoffman. I live at 3773 Spartan. My wife couldn't be here tonight. She filled out the card. That's because she's sick from standing too close to a solar panel. I'm pretty sure that's what happened. Couple of questions for you. One, did you do an environmental impact study? Two, did you do an economic impact study? And obviously, we, the people, the greater percentage of people in this room are against this. And what you want to put in, my degrees in electronics, what you want to put in is a low dosage microwave. You want to pay for the medical bills for the people that are subjected to this thing on top of the noise and everything else you've heard? So again, I, I heard somebody else mention this. To try to ramrod something like this down the throats of these people could very well cost you your position on the board. I don't want to be seriously thinking about what you're trying to do because the greater percentage of people in this room don't want this. I yield the rest of my time back to the board.
Can I have Trevor DeFreen, 5045 Parker?
You fill that out.
Trevor DeFreen. And can I have Mike Wilton on deck? Mike Wilton, 5050 Parker.
Trevor DeFreen, 5045 Parker Road. I'm opposed to this plan. For most people like myself, a home is the largest financial investment we'll make in our lifetime. I've spent the last 15 years investing my extra money and time into my property to help maintain and increase its value. I keep, keep my yard clean and free of eyesores so when my neighbors drive by, they don't have to look at junk. Now, some of my neighbors are requesting my permission to build eyesores on their property for me to look at and I'm opposed to it. My property value will be gone. My house will likely be unsellable if there's an industrial solar facility in my backyard. My home is my future and I don't give my neighbors permission to take it away. That's my pursuit of happiness. Open on this plan.
Can I have William Harvey on deck? William Harvey, 5750 State.
Hi, my name's Mike Wilton. I'm also a life area in Fort Grasset, a resident. And I'd like to, I took this copy of the master plan and I want to read the first sentence of the master plan. Right? That's what all this is based on. We have a master plan and they did their due diligence to put a plan together. Here's the first sentence. "The goal of land use planning is the improvement of the general welfare of the people of Fort Grasset Township." You know, I mean, what don't you understand about that? The first sentence. Okay, and what I'm hearing, I've got my hand, I've got three separate reports. Three separate reports, because I think this is the nuts and bolts of this whole thing. Is everybody here is for everybody to enjoy and use their land as the way they want to. As long as it doesn't harm their neighbors. That's why we have noise ordinances. That's why we, you know, different use ordinances. You can't put a fence up so high. Everybody understands that. It's all common sense. But when you look at these reports, three separate reports. One is early as March 16th, 2023, where they, this was done by the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory. 1.8 million home sales, this study. 1.8 million, right? Loss of property value. Loss of property value. "The most significant difference in property values were observed for homes near solar farm sites previously used for agriculture." This is exactly what we have here. I mean, this isn't a secret. I found this in five minutes. I mean, we need to, we need, we need to do the due diligence. I mean, I understand these people want to sell this stuff and make a profit. And they couldn't, they're using our tax dollars to do it. Now, none of these, none of these projects could make their bargains if it wasn't for the tax base behind it. And they say, well, we're going to have this infrastructure, they're going to pay 1.5 billion in infrastructure or 150 million in infrastructure and we're going to pay taxes on it. Well, guess what? That's the power company paying the taxes. We pay the rates. I mean, we're paying for it. We're paying for the infrastructure going on our taxes. We're paying for the profit that goes out. It's not rocket science here. But the real nuts and bolts of this, our own standards in the township, our own county, not county, but our own township standards reflect the hurdles that have to be met before they can do this. And one of them is they cannot harm property values. You can't cross that fence and, and harm the property values of the neighborhood. And that's exactly what this is doing.
That's your time. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is William Harvey, Fort Grasset resident for many, many years. Live at 5750 State Road. Everything we do in life is a risk. Whatever you do, you go to the store to get some cookies, you risk getting in a car accident. I don't see where our township people represent us if we weigh the benefits versus the cost. Everybody's talking negative about all this stuff and I'm sure there's a lot of negativity around it. But I haven't heard any of the benefits yet. They, they were quite a thing on their chart. They're going to spend $140 million on this project. But they give us generic number of millions in taxes. Well, some other gentleman said our township portion of it's going to be awful small. Well, that's, the benefit is awful small, the risk is awful high. Several people out here said they went on their own and I congratulate them and commend them for I had to go see some of these facilities. And that was a thing I wanted to ask before you vote on this. At minimum, table this so you can do the studies that these people have asked to be done. Environmental studies, the health hazard risk, environment, environmental risk. As I was studying, I didn't see any companies out there that found profitability in recycling panels. Our dumps due to close in 2030, I believe. So what are we going to do with all these hazards, thousands and thousands of hazardous panels that are being decommissioned? I, I think a group, a non-biased group of the panel, the board, planning commission, township people, residents of township, ask for volunteers, we get a non-biased panel together. Go look at the one that they were talking about. Where was it?
Shaiwasi.
Shaiwasi, Detroit Edison. I worked for DT for 40 years and I know about the humming and the transformer noise. Go visit the one in LaPire, talk to residents, get appointments, talk to residents. Live a quarter mile, live two miles. Come back, have another meeting with the township, non-biased, independent of this company here. Because obviously they're biased, they're in it for the money and that's what their company does. Come back with an non-biased opinion where you folks, our township folks, can have a say in. Here's what we seen, here's what we heard. Here's some studies that have been independent. One of the gentlemen says we have some money in the fund to fund some independent surveys, some well-known groups. That's my thing. At minimum, table this thing like the attorney said. I don't know about the laws he was talking about, but table this thing till some better information. Information is power. We don't have the information. I, I guess my head's been very sandy. I wasn't working. I guess my head's been very sandy, I wasn't aware of the two hundred meetings we had about this, so I was only aware of two.
There wasn't any.
Yes, there are four or five meetings. How many people?
And that's your time, thank you so much. I have Eric Robb, Eric Robb, five five three zero Lake Shore. And I also have Elaine Robb, Elaine Robb, five five three zero Lake Shore, on deck.
Eric Robb, five five three zero Lake Shore, Fort Grashit. I apologize if I go over some things that were already mentioned, but just got a statement here I'd like to read. Subsidies for renewable energy have more than doubled since twenty sixteen, and they got a real shot in the arm in twenty twenty-two with the Inflation Reduction Act passed by the Biden administration. Coal, oil, natural gas, and nuclear received fifty percent, fifteen percent of all subsidies. Wind and solar combined represented ninety-four percent of the federal renewable electricity-related subsidies, subsidies in twenty twenty-two, while producing a combined five point five percent of the total primary energy. Inefficiently, intermittently, and within area footprint orders of magnitude larger than traditional fossil or nuclear generating facilities. If one looks at the power density in watts per square meter of renewables versus natural gas and nuclear generation, wind is about one watt per square meter, solar about ten watts per square meter, natural gas nineteen hundred watts per square meter, and nuclear two thousand watts per square meter. To put it in perspective, you can fuel a nuclear carrier with kilograms of material or fuel, and it'll run for decades. Obviously, conventional generating methods are orders of magnitude more efficient than the alternatives. It's possible the only way Ranger Power can make money here is off the incentives and subsidies, which I would remind you, and has, which has been mentioned before, you are all paying for through diversion of tax revenues for borrowing on your half, on your behalf, whether you like it or not, and increased electricity rates. It all sounds warm and fuzzy to have jobs related to the implementations or forms, increased tax revenues for our local government and schools, et cetera, but the jobs will be largely transitory and not particularly high skilled or high paying. The components will come largely from a potential enemy, and I'm not convinced that more money from government and schools is the best way to spend our societal resources. I suspect Ranger Power will be involved just long enough to get their share of the subsidies. I also suspect that landowners involved in the potential lease arrangements will make two to three times what they could with their land and cultivation. Energy density per capita largely determines standard of living in nuclear and fossil fuels rather than when their soul provide this. I think I'm done, I've got more to say. But I think this is very poor.
Thank you.
Very poor for society's reasons.
Can I have Michael Mays on deck? Yeah, you're not, you're Elaine, yeah. Michael Mays on deck, zero eight three coal.
Am I starting? My name is Elaine Robb, I live at fifty five thirty Lake Shore Road in Fort Grashit, Michigan. My husband just spoke, I agree with everything he said. My husband is, and really, with all the people who are against this, I am opposed to this. I agree with everyone who is opposed to this. My husband is really smart, and he is, he researches very well, and he knows what's going on. And this is a very emotional thing, because what you guys are proposing will be detrimental and severely harm us, this will not be a benefit. What you guys are proposing will hurt us, actively hurt us. The water, the noise, the property values, this is going to hurt us. I appeal to your hearts, I appeal to your honesty and integrity, to stand for what is right, to stand for what is honest and good. The attorney who spoke about House Bill fifty-one twenty and fifty-one twenty-one, and spoke of, quote, "the elephant in the room," I have grave concerns, I have seen this in another area, where governments are taking authority away from local governing agencies such as yourself, the township offices, and putting it in other places where other people can control. And I would suspect, based on another situation that I was involved in, that the names of the people who would be in authority in this other corporation were not even listed. So you don't even know who's going to take control. So I agree with what that other attorney said, that raises grave, grave, grave concerns. We are supposed to be in a country where there is representative government, and I appeal to, to listen to the people who have gone to visit Chiawasi County and spoken to the people there. And remember, I've heard people speak about the people and walkers who could not even come here. My mom's a hundred and one, she has a walker, she lives at our house, she's at home. She's against this. And I just pray that you guys, you appeal to what is honest and good, and don't go through with this, thank you.
Can I have Edwadal on deck? Edwadal, three one four zero Roosevelt.
Hi, I'm Michael Mays, forty eighty-three coal. I just bought my property last year, August. I've been running in and out of the township building, getting all my paperwork to build my dream home, pole barn, all that, looking for it here on, in this area my whole life. I didn't see anything on this. I put all my money into this, and I don't have nothing after this. And, I mean, I've seen some of your guys' faces handing paperwork, you should have let me know about this. This is, if, if there's nothing crooked about it, why is it coming down right now? I got two daughters that I gotta provide for, and now I gotta reassess everything. I know it's, you know, property, property going down may not be bad much, but it's still a lot to me, maybe not to these guys, or whoever else got a lot of money, but somebody like me, I'm by myself, with two daughters, and then this pops up. It's just, you shouldn't let me know when I was coming in there and getting the paperwork.
That's right.
That's all I'm saying, I'm against this, and everybody is, it's a no-brainer. I mean, it's as simple as that, it's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Can I have Diane Hewlett? Can I also have Thomas Dennis on board? Thomas Dennis, three one seven six Roosevelt.
Hi, I'm Diane Hewlett, I'm from Riley, Michigan. I have all the typical concerns, as everyone, real estate, toxic dry wells, setbacks. I would like to add a few more. The dirty energy that I am told that's trapped between the smart meters in your house, your walls. Also, I've not seen anything on cattle, I understand it's deadly to them. We are a sixth-generation farmer in the Riley area, and I'm sure many more before that. I have also been to Lennon, exit one twenty-three, for anyone that wants to go, and have given mileage. It is awful. I also have video, I'd love to play for you as well. And you, sir, talk about good neighbors, I don't see how anyone can consider this good neighbors. I see, when you talk about schools, I see indoctrinated children, that's what I see.
Thank you.
If you want to change the meeting, you can listen to all the people call that apparently could not come back tonight, and that's a real shame. I have also been to Lansing four times on the bills, several bills that the gentleman mentioned. We are not able to speak there, so I do really appreciate the time here to speak. I would also like to add that your right does not supersede my right to not wanting this when it's toxic and hazardous. And I don't understand how cavalier everyone can be when you say, oh, well, that's, that's waste product, it'll just go to the landfills of wherever they go in Bellevue. All you're doing is pushing that issue on another county, why would you do that to your good neighbors? Also, I see a lot, you talk about, openly talk about aluminum being in there, as far as I know, that's very toxic, because my nature's path doctor is giving me a remedy to remove aluminum from me. So that is not a talking point for you, just saying. All I see here really is untruths wrapped in arrogance, and I just ask you to vote for the people and not the money. And I have a whole lot more to say, but I'll end it there. Except that, I will play this. And, that's a, that's a non, my point is, it's still here, okay? There you go, and let's hear it for me in three seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Thomas Dennis here, Thomas Dennis, three one seven six Roosevelt. Okay. Can I have Ashley Richardson, five six six four Jettow, Ashley Richardson? And I also have Cole Friedberg, five six six four Jettow, on deck.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Richardson, and I live at five six six four Jettow Road. My parents own a farm on Cole Road, which is where I was raised, it's where I learned how to build a tree fort, to ride a horse, to fix a fence, and to care for the many animals on our farm. I also learned to respect the land that I lived and played on, I used to ride across Mr. Lewis's field, which was the senior Mr. Lewis at the time, from Cole Road to Race Road when trail riding with my horse. I had asked Mr. Lewis, who has since passed away, for permission to do this. He gave me permission to ride across his fields, because I think he knew I respected the land and his crops just as much as I did. I was always careful and never trampled his beans or his corn. I now wonder what he would think of this industrial solar farm idea. I have a hard time believing he would be excited about the idea of destroying such a large portion of our agricultural land in our community. This project involves approximately nine hundred acres in Fort Grashit Township, and that is almost half of the agricultural land in our community. It frightens me to think that such rash decisions are being made regarding this much land use in our township. I'm an educated woman, and I sincerely appreciate all of the studies that some of the citizens who have come here tonight have presented regarding solar panel farm use. At the same time, I also believe in hearing the voice and the heart of the people, and I would ask you to participate in a quick study of our own, and I would like to see a show of hands tonight of all of those who are opposed of this solar panel industrial farm being brought forward into our community. I think that this alone represents the voice of our people that hopefully you people up here will continue to represent for us as you have been chosen to do so. I have concerns about our environment, about my children, who are also being raised on my parents' farm. I have concerns about our great lakes and our real estate. I would also like a quick show of hands of anybody who has ever purchased a home and gone to a real estate agent and said, could you please find me a piece of property next to a solar panel farm, because I really want to live there, anyone? I don't see too many hands raised there this evening. So again, I would like our township and the board and the planning committee to strongly consider what is best for our people going forward, thank you.
Can I have Liz Masters on deck? Did Cole not want to speak?
Yes.
He was called up. Liz Masters on deck.
Hello, my name is Kale Fryberg, and I am ten years old. I was born in my grandma's living room on Cole Road. I've played in the fields and weeds on her farm since I was born. It is my happy place, it is where I grow up. We call my grandma Grandma Honey, because she loves her land like the bees that make honey love their hive. My grandma and I think her farm is magic. My grandma has been sad a lot lately since she found out that the way it's surrounding her farm, we covered in solar panels. I have been sad too, I am worried about the birds, turkey, and deer, other wildlife that will be scared away. I saw a solar farm like the one they want to put up with my grandma and grandpa. It was so loud that it gave me a headache, and we weren't that close. The panels were grown a lot of farmland forever that we used to grow worms and beans. We learned in school that keeping farmland healthy is important for our community. This project takes away half of our farmland in this community and grows it forever. That is a lot of going to destroy all it wants to have so fast. My grandma and grandpa brought their farm to enjoy the peace and beauty of the community around them. The solar panel farm would kill their dreams and mine of living happily on our family farm. I hope the township makes the right choice not to have a solar panel farm in our community. I love you Grandma Honey, and I hope the township listens to its people and does what is right. Then you and I will be happy.
Thank you. Can I have Sandra Tan, Tannell on deck? Sandra Tannell?
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I approach this Honorable Board tonight, I'm a supervisor of Wales Township, my name is Liz Masters. It's my question why I should be before your board, but obviously, this amount of residents that are responding, unfortunately, I had to learn about solar and wind, when we and our community was thrust in the same position as yours. I did mention, or I did send to the entire board and the planning commission a bulletin from the Michigan State Tax Commission that was issued on October twenty-third, it's bulletin number seventeen, and I'm just going to read a segment of it to you tonight. A qualified facility, a qualified facility for which a certificate is in effect, for the period on and after effective date of the certificate and continuing for twenty years, is exempt from ad valorem property taxes collected under the General Property Tax Act. So I read this to you, that was just issued with what our state is doing right now, we're all familiar with that. And I'm going to also reiterate to the attorney that had the con-
And I'm going to also reiterate to the attorney that had the comment. I have heard that Fort Gresham might be in a hurry to do this before the state does. And I've attended Lansing. There's been several amendments to those. And at this time, your ordinance is more lenient and less protective than what the state has in place, what is passing about. Also, I read through this agenda tonight, contacts, communications, correspondence. As I say, I did have that bulletin 17 that I sent to you. I do not see it listed here. I believe you might have had a few letters from a few residents or concerned citizens. And I also have concern on this reading tonight that Fort Gresham might have tried to rush the site plan in as well as this hearing because it is on the agenda. That is extremely concerning to me. I was one of those that have traveled to Chiwasi several times. Once oddly for a wedding that I went over there, so I saw it under construction. I got to see the special application that they did for that. These site plans or these sites are rushed through. I would ask if this board is considering accepting this, that you can actually, and your attorney can confirm, that you can add conditionals on this. I ask that one of the conditionals is, because the only idea is a tax incentive, that they would waive their right to tax exemption. Thank you.
Can I have Brendan Miller on deck? Brendan Miller, 745 Holland. Maybe. Leave terminal beer. Brendan Miller on deck.
My name's Sandra Tannenhill from Wales. I will not sit and watch families' lives being turned upside down by this eagerness to move townships' majority voices. You have proven you're accommodating five leaseholders in an out-of-state company, letting them devour 8% of your township in disregard of the majority of your residents' needs and wants. You have not properly protected these residents. This company is being supplied by China with the solar panels containing hazardous materials. The United States EPA states 95% of solar panels sold as of today are crystalline silicon solar PV and heavy metals are present and are deemed hazardous. Clean Energy Associates, a Denver-based company, determined recently with a new study, over eight years of testing, 300,000 PV modules show that 83% of sites tested had line cracks, 78% had a soldering anomaly, and 76% had complex cracks. The survey involved visual inspections tested across 148 sites, meaning the panels are full of cracks. Where do these hazardous materials go once they're released? There was a decision at the St. Clair County meeting last month about battery storage. When asked to support site solars, battery storage plan for Fort Gresham, the answer was not yet. This is another extremely concerning topic that could be introduced by this company. I understand some of your residents have recently been approached. Once they're in, they're in. While most townships across the state researching and coming to the same conclusion, these companies aren't all what they are chalked up to be. And you've done just the opposite. We've all viewed your new ordinances and most of us would agree they are pathetically written with no regard to protecting the residents nor the environment. You're plowing over your master plan. You claim that farmers are now entitled and are trying to supplement their income so they have the right to do what they want because it's their land. It's not an excuse. There's no justification. What about the residents that gain nothing but inscapable noise pollution and removing peace and happiness from their lives? Their livelihood and investment is just as important with the mentality that you are now forcing residents to live next to these industrial zones against their will. Families will have no choice but to move or put up with it. And that isn't the reason, isn't that the reason we have state laws to have master plans, which you're now plowing over? Most of us picked our homes in rural areas to get away from the hustle and bustle, noise, and retreat to solidarity at the countryside. We are not guinea pigs and experiment nor collateral damage. You were elected to do a job. Your main responsibility is to protect us, not a company. The three big questions of the night, what dollar amount did you sell out your township for? What are you going to do with the unreliable garbage besides forcing us to live next to it when this trend is over obsolete or the company just moves on? What are you going to do now that you've seen and heard the majority of your community say no all with valid reasons?
Thank you. Can I have Kevin Glass on deck? Kevin Glass. Your brother, right? Kevin Glass, 10106 Hill.
Hello, my name is Brendan Miller. I am with a group called Land Liberty Coalition. We're a group of conservatives who believe in property rights and support renewable energy development as well as any energy development on the land of farmers. As I said, we support property rights. I'm also a farmer myself. I actually farm about 20 minutes north of here. And the reason I'm here today is I was invited by a farmer who's in the area, actually not involved in the project. And I also talked to a couple of farmers who are involved in the project and I felt was necessary. But someone who has my experience to give your experience, give my experience to you guys and what solar is all about. My brother, as it was noted, I live in LaPierre. My brother actually lived right next to a solar facility for several years in LaPierre. And not only near it, but right in front of it. There is something 5 feet away from his house. I can tell you this much, it does not cause dramatic noise issues. I can tell you that. It does not cause dramatic EMF radiation or anything else. The other thing I want to point out too is concerns about toxic chemical leaching. I understand why that would be the case. It's true cadmium isn't many of the solar panels that are put into townships across the state of Michigan. But what's really important to note is that the cadmium and any of the toxic chemicals that are produced by solar panels are actually being encased within several panes of glass. They've done several studies that indicate that they cannot be penetrated in any significant way. And the other thing you have to keep in mind is if solar panels are penetrated, then you would have to actually leach that out. Cadmium is a metal. It would be encased inside. So water would have to get into the cadmium area, stay there, and then find a way out, which is highly unlikely. Another thing that's really important that most energy companies do across the state of Michigan is they have a system set up so that if one breaks, they replace it immediately. Another thing I want to put into effect here is the fact that farmers in this area and across the entire state need opportunity to balance their income. It's rough being a farmer. I will tell you, as I said, I have a farm about 20 minutes north of here. There's another farm just a little bit north of that. I cannot farm it anymore. That farmland, it is done. It is unable to be produced any longer. That land is either going to be sold to a developer or it's going to have to sit fallow. If I could put solar on that property, it would make it productive. It would help me balance my budget. Same with the farmers here in these communities as well. And finally, last thing I want to point out is I was a former planning commission member. As you guys are well aware, one, I just want to say, your guys' solar ordinance addresses the concerns of the community. It has sound requirements. If the sound requirements are broken, you guys have the power to take that to effect and take it's port and shut down those things. So that is already in your guys' ordinance. And as you are well aware in the Michigan Zoning and Naval Atlantic, it says, if a project permit follows all the rules and regulations of your ordinance, you are required, you shall accept it. You shall approve it. And all I ask for you tonight is to consider that. And if it does follow the requirements of your ordinance, you shall approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Folks. Folks. Everyone gets a chance to talk. Shouting is not productive in the slightest. If you want to make a comment, fill out a comment card and walk up to the microphone when your name is called. Please and thank you.
Can I have Janice Torrey on deck? Janice Torrey, 3640 North Road.
My name is Kevin Glass, Wales Township. I am a planning commission member and a ZPA member. And it sounds like that's the second person I've heard in favor of solar tonight. But I'd like to say that everything that's been said tonight has been said over and over again. There should be no clue at all as to how the people feel in this township. And I'd like to remind the planning commission and any ZPA members that when we're appointed to these positions, we're not appointed to an agenda from a supervisor or anybody else. We're appointed to represent all the residents of the township. Not a few. They all must meet the ordinance. The master plan, which you've already heard, clearly states these solar panels in many ways more than one do not meet the master plan that you've written for your township. So the only things I have left now, since it's already been said, is let's take a quick look at the resale value of these homes. I'm looking at what the township has put out representing 12 other solar companies and the people that said it won't affect their property values. And these are, of course, real estate companies that we've heard from before. People say we believe them. And the very first one from Delta Solar Power, the real estate, says they have not adjusted assessed values for properties surrounding these solar panels. So what good is that if they haven't readjusted for solar panels? So you have to look close through the information you see. And it sounds like enough people here have looked very clear to what's being asked for you to decide on tonight. It's already been stated 45, 50% of total agricultural land could be diverted to, I can't even say it, solar panels for all these people that have lived through all their lives. I see why they're passionate. I hope you do too. But I will put this in, recently we were at a training session for planning commission members and ZPA members. Some of the best trainees were there, both attorneys and the planning, master planner. And I asked a simple question, and hopefully some of you were there. And the question was, if a petition comes before the planning commission asking for rezoning or a special land use permit solely based on financial benefit for a very few over all the other residents, what would be your answer? And it was obvious. He said, "Those that are being trained or are trained would know that that petition could not be allowed. It would have to be denied." So I would ask you, the people that are filing petitions when it's less than 1% of the total residents for that community, $500 in this case, they either are doing it for the money or they're going to tell you it's for a better climate change for the earth. So you make a decision on which one of those you think is true. I would say you must really think hard about the fellow residents, who you go to church with, your neighbors, and decide what's best for the community, all the residents, not just a few. They can do what they want, but it shouldn't impact the rest of the residents in the community that have to live around this or future generations.
Thank you very much. Janice Torrey. Janice Torrey here. Janice Torrey. Can I have Margaret Wolfe, 3640 North Road? Margaret Wolfe. Margaret Wolfe here. Let's go with Mike Boozon, 4277 Morchester. Mike here. Let's try Justin Horvath, 818 South Washington Street. Justin Horvath, 818 South Washington. David Nowicki, 6110 Smith Creek. David Nowicki here. Hi, David.
Hi, David Nowicki from 6110 Smith Creek, Will. I live about a mile or three from the landfill there, so I know a little bit about pollution and stuff. My sources from EPA and where I read, there's a lot of chemicals that wasn't brought up by Corsite. One is arsenic, which causes cancer, bladder, and lung problems. Chromium causes mental health problems. Copper, kidney and liver damage. Lead, poisoning, brain damage, nervous system, kidney damage, eye irritation, respiratory. And then silicone, we either can irritate, there's noise. We all heard about the noise a mile away. Headaches, nausea, and dizziness. We've got a lot of that in this community already. And also states, like somebody else said, you're supposed to live 1.2 miles away from a solar farm. And a lot of people aren't. This is a danger, not only a danger to humans, but also animals drinking contaminated water. Run off. It's passing onto their family. Deer hunters. Where's that deer at? But anyway, how about the loss of farmland and trees? Trees absorb the carbon. That's part of the environment for us. Land feeds the world basically. We run out of land. That's what one farmer said. My land isn't good anymore to grow crops. Well, if we're using it for solar panels too, good land, then we have less land. Also, recycling. They say, "Oh, maybe recycle this," but on the internet, according to EPA, it's not profitable. So that goes into the landfills, more pollution. Also, they never understand how many solar panels are going to be. Well, one on the way to 69 there, there's 245 acres. There's 200,000 solar panels there. So if you add that, you know, double that, you've got a kind of idea of what many solar panels are going to be there. Well, solar puts out magnetic, magnetic, like, power lines that out. EMF, yeah, EMF, the power lines, you know, say, or X-ray. Well, X-rays are regulated in the past. How many you should get because it could cause cancer. Machines are calibrated. How are these fields calibrated? How much radiation is coming from these fields? That every day you go down the road and you're being faced, you're getting that radiation every day. And people live right next to it.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have Martin Habulowski, 2848 Monticello Drive? Martin here. I also have David Rushing on deck. David Rushing, 12618 Masters Road.
Hello, I'm Marty Habulowski. I'm the elected chair of the Sierra Club Blue Water Committee, serving St. Clair and Sanland Counties. And for those that don't know, Sierra Club is the largest, oldest, and most influential grassroots environmental organization with 150,000 members in Michigan, 5,000 in the thumb. And I'm here to speak in support of what Bordside Solar plans to do in Fort Gresham. And I'm only going to talk about the safety of solar panels. So much has been discussed today. There's so much concern about the safety of solar panels. Much of this is distortion of facts. One of the common pieces of this information is that solar panels will poison the ground. First of all, solar panels are constructed in similar fashion as car windshields or hurricane glass, that the materials inside will remain intact. This rugged construction has been used for over 30 years and it's why manufacturers could give a 25-year power production guarantee or warranty. During Hurricane Sandy, many of the large-scale solar facilities in New York and New Jersey only suffered minor damage. During Hurricane Matthew, one solar tractor manufacturer reported that their numerous systems received zero damage during the storm. So for those of you that are concerned about reliability of electrical, there you go. Some solar panels have a small amount of toxic materials. One of them is lead, but it would take 750 solar panels to equal the amount of lead in one car battery. The lead is only used for soldering. Many manufacturers are moving away from lead solder. Real life situation has demonstrated the way that solar panels are made keeps the lead used in them intact. And in fact, car accidents are a much greater risk of exposing lead to the environment. Many people claim that the release of cadmium from solar panels poses a health risk, but it's not pure cadmium that we're talking about here. It's cadmium telluride. It's a very stable compound. It's negligible and it's toxic risk to people. In addition, cadmium telluride is encased in glass, similar to hurricane glass. And solar is frequently replacing coal-fired power plants. I haven't heard anybody speak in support of coal. Maybe there are some coal people here. Coal ash contains cadmium and is a significant toxic risk to people. It also contains arsenic and lead that can be readily released to the environment. 140 million tons of coal ash is produced in the U.S. each year and much of it is not properly stored. And if you go around... And if you go around to the DTE, various coal plants, you'll see it's sitting out there to go into, into the land or into the water.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, please give everybody their time. Thank you. Can I have John here? John, where are you at here?
Rocky again?
Yeah. No, I got two for you, so I won't work that one duplicate. Can I have Steve Bricker on deck? Steve Bricker, 4709 State Road?
Well, I'm Dave Rushing, I live in Raleigh Township, 12618 Masters Road. I'm going to talk fairly quick because I've got a lot of points. One, I'm very much against it being potentially proposed. I also take exception to a pledge not being held. I've been to an office over 20 years, this is the second time, and over 200 readings that I've been to, that the pledge allegiance has been held. Next, I'm going to address the high end, as we said, 140 million in the grants that they get. Every industry company is going to be doing a backdoor tax to your lack of electrical. That's where they're going to get the money for anything they need to do. It isn't money coming out of their pockets, it's coming out of your pocket. Whatever they do, it's coming out of your pocket. Second, the resolution we passed at the county, 2318. We passed resolution that China was directed specifically, but all foreign governments that are hostile to the United States, we will not do business with in St. Clair County. We got to that 90 tons of fossil, that solar panels, 80% of them are made from China. I am concerned that something will be in those solar panels that they can control our energy and our grid systems from an outside source. Currently Ford Motor Company can shut your vehicle off if you don't pay your monthly bill. I think it'd be very easy technology for them to put that into the solar panels, and I believe they're going to have Chinese expertise at the locations. Next, master plan, I believe if you propose this or approve it, you are a direct provider of foundation to your oath of office and your planning commission, or your master plan. There's nothing in your master plan that says you can have 700 acres of industrial, and that's exactly what you're going to be doing. You say it's still going to be agriculture, it will not be. That's been farmed for corn, soybeans and other cash crops, that is going to be gone for 20 to 25 years. This will be 100% industrial, and if this started in court, I believe the judge will can say that that is what's happening there. I think you also have to protect your entire residence. You're going to devalue many properties, and there'll be documentation that's done nationwide that will find out, and I believe that township may be liable. If somebody has a house that's worth, if the property's worth, oh, 500,000, and it gets you devalued to 250,000, I think they can come right to the township and say, I want my 250,000 dollars. There's going to be following, and I did talk to them, and they did address the board, and it will be again in a conference call, I will disagree with what he said. I addressed heavy metals in regards to our landfill, we're a close county and heavy metals. He said there will be no hazardous materials in the landfill. Matt Williams, our landfill director, said that there are as heavy metals, which means that they will not be allowed in our landfill. I'll close with this. In California, he said that in the conference call, they will be recycled or refurbished. In California, they throw them in the garbage because it's cheap just to put other ones in, try to remove them, do it, so. I will do, I will do, and I got a couple more.
Can I have Doug Owen on deck? Doug Owen, 5574 Tyson Road?
Go ahead, sit down.
You're passing.
Okay, my name's Steve Bricker, I live at 4709 State Road. And before I read my statement, I just want to tell you all that I, first I want to thank you for being able to voice my opinion. But I love where I live. I could, you know, any place that I could live, I would live right where I'm at. I love being in the country. My wife and I sit out in our backyard and look out at the crops, and there's just no place I'd rather be. And where they're proposing this is not behind our house, it's down the road. But in the future, it could be behind my house. And I think we need to think about that, because these people are our neighbors, and they're your neighbors too. We all live in the same area, and we need to think about that. So since we can't have a discussion, I'd like to ask several rhetorical questions. First, do any of you on the board live on the property that backs up against a solar farm, where we'll be? If you did live in front of the solar farm and had to look out your back window at these black panels, how do you feel about that? And if, if, the last one is, if you would not like that, which I'm sure none of you would, why would your neighbor? I don't think there's, you can bring anybody, even the farmer here that said that he wants this, I don't think he'd want to look out his back window at this.
Do you have a lot of the middle of them?
These people here are your neighbors, and they voted for you to represent them. And it's very clear that they don't want this. And I just hope you can treat people here the way you would like to be treated, as if this was proposed for your backyard. Whatever you decide, I ask everyone here to see how each one of these people vote, and remember it when you vote next time at the next election. Thank you.
Can I have George Kesh, 5105, 4th Avenue? George Kesh? Can I have on deck Mike Merelski, 3732 T-4?
Well, I want to appreciate a three-minute timer, because I'm going kind of slow to begin with. I'm disappointed in all of you who've taken the wind out of my one hour of research. Where's that young man that spoke? I'm going to vote for him as president, so make sure he sets some high goals. My wife, my wife's, please, well, wait. My wife said, don't make a fool out of yourself. You know that's hard to do after 84 years, but I promise to change. You notice today wasn't a good solar day? I didn't know if you noticed that or not. We have a lot of not-so-good solar days in Michigan. I did some research too, but I'm not going to, I tried to piecemeal some of the stuff out of this documentation. And pardon me while I put my beepers on because I just had cataract surgery. I can see far, but nobody close will ever be recognized. This is the permit application narrative from Portside Solar Project. I want you to know, there's 10 solar plants, at least according to what I've read. Seven of them are based in China. Now, seven. The one in Canada that's closely related, or maybe they're tied in. I don't know if that means much to anybody, but when we think about where jobs are going and have gone from this country in the last several years, I think that highly concerns me, and maybe it could concern you, your kids and your grandkids. The decommission was mentioned several times. They can put up a surety bond, I guess, irrevocable letter of credit, or they can make a cash deposit, I don't know which one they're going to do. I don't know how long those things last. If this lease is up for 30, 40, 50 years, I'm not sure this company will be in and around for that length of time. However, trusting that they will be, on page 1215 of their document, it also states, "Do not interfere with development by any kind or the surrounding properties." From what I've heard from some of you today, that is a falsehood. But maybe your property will increase. I know your taxes will. We have, wow, I have one left, ouch. Somebody said that if they dismantle this, they're hiring, how do you mention, they're hiring 40 million dollars a week again? Takes about four and a half million.
That's your time. Thank you so much.
I am out?
No. Thank you.
That hurt.
Can I have Joe Guzdala on deck? 3731 Dyke?
Mike Narawski, Fort Grashit resident. 20 years, been working for a global manufacturer, products of battery storage industry solutions. We deal with foreign products on a daily basis, and I can tell you for a fact that we have to test all our metals, and some of the metal is inferior, it's mixed with different chemicals and ingredients. So I totally don't agree that everything is going to be safe that we put into these solar panels. Over 20 years of this, and I can tell you, it's a fact. It has to be tested, it's coming off, from offshore, and as we've heard here tonight, most of these products are made offshore, specifically the panels. So while I do support a better climate for, you know, technologies, I'm totally against a solar project in our backyard. You know, just, just to look at the definition, we have a farming, from the Cambridge dictionary, business or activity of raising animals, growing crops on a farm. When did that change? When big government gets involved, pumps billions of dollars into an industry they've been propping up for years, and now you're coming after people that live in rural America.
Great.
Here in Webster, the practice of agriculture, or aquaculture, waterfarming, once again, coming after rural America because it's cheap and it's inexpensive land that you can go after and make big money out of, that these guys and myself are paying for. We've already did, we've already done the show of hands, so we won't do that again. We've all heard these catchphrases, green energy, well, the sun is free. But what about on the front end? What about making the panels? Is that green energy? All the mining and cost that goes into harvesting all the minerals that you're taking for this energy? And by the way, there's little base power in your product. Our company, our, our United States, we need massive base power. You have minimal, that's why you need so much land to produce minimal watt power. Mr. Alan Beeler in our legislature estimated 150,000 square miles, twice the size of the size of Detroit.
Sir, thank you very much.
Do not go there.
Is Joe Guzdala here?
Yep, I am here. Can you see me?
Can I also have Virginia Corey on deck? Virginia Corey, 4607?
Okay, you know, everybody talks about how global warming and everything is melting the glaciers and stuff. How much heat does these damn solar panels squirt out? There's millions of them going to be out around there, and it's going to be melting shit faster than we can ride in our motorcycles and our lawnmowers cutting our grass, but don't run your car and fill it up with gas because it's too damn hot. Put more heat in the world. Okay, I don't know. I'm opposed to it. I hate what it's doing to my friends that are real close to where he's proposing to put this shit in. And I don't think that these guys should let it pass. I think that these need to get right out of there. Bye.
Can I have Thomas Notton on deck? Thomas Notton, 4458?
Hi, Virginia Corey, 4641 Lake Shore Road. About 100 years ago or so, all across America, there were communities, citizens, all irate because this new technology was going to cause all kinds of noise, safety problems, and yet today, every person in this room, except for that little boy, has owned a car in their lifetime, at least, if not only today. I support solar energy. I don't know where this project's going. I know this project's a lot different than Shawnee County, they have different requirements. I trust our panel here has gone through all the necessary compliance. They've had Mr. Fletcher here guiding them to tell them what they have to do and what the law is, and I trust you all that you're doing your due diligence, and I appreciate what you're doing. And I think I speak for, there's several hundred people who are obviously very upset, but there's 10,000 residents in our community that aren't here tonight, and they have, a lot of them feel the same way I do. They want to see our world get better, and we're doing all, everybody's doing their part to try and make it a better place, to try to get better energy and make it safer in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Another reminder to respect everybody's time, please. Thank you. Can I have David Hastings on deck? David Hastings, 4347, here again?
I decline, pardon me, thank you.
I see. Okay. Can I have Chris Berto on deck? 4607 Metcalfe? Thomas, direct.
Okay. My name's Thomas Notton, I'm at 4458 Abel Drive, and I moved here 10 years ago because I liked the wildlife and the nature and everything else. If I wanted to live in the city, I'd stay there, but I don't see, you know, just use cars themselves, you know, try to sell this building, he needs his own research, come down over, go tell the Hossy whatever, so the location was at, take some pictures, part of the coordination, go down there, do their due diligence, and make, make it a better world for all of us who are destroying this great country of ours by doing it. And after they're gone, I notice we off to another township, try to sell a building, mine a project off to people of Fort Grashit Township. That's what I'm saying, so I just hope you do the right thing, and check out these other places, just don't take their word for it. Leave out the boards in there.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris Berto here. I was going to talk about how my sister and I have had farms for 20 years. The first thing we look at is to see it's zone agricultural, always. We look around, make sure there's people around us, there's horses, people have goats over here, we're like, good, these are our people. Never in a million years would I ever have dreamt, I'm so stupid to not research and see that there's going to be a solar nightmare a half a mile away from my farm. What I want to talk about now, after the lady spoke about all the people she knows down by the lake, that a lot of them want to have solar. I spent all day Sunday getting petitions signed, passing out flyers, talking to people who cared a lot about this. Most of them, I can't say all, I can't give you the numbers, my head is spinning with this. Most of the people I spoke to do not want this monstrosity in Fort Grashit. We love Fort Grashit. I live in Clyde, Fort Grashit is my second community, this makes me just ill. But a lot of the people that I spoke to, like I said, on the lake are very concerned, and they don't want this. Also, hey Dave, where's Mr. Crawford tonight?
Yep. I have William Harvey, 5750 State Road. William Harvey?
Here he talks.
William Harvey? I have Jim Wire from Clyde. Jim Wire? And I also have Janine Hurdy on deck. Janine Hurdy, 3567 Congress Street?
Is this Mike?
That's fine. Who, Jim or William?
I'm going to go for broke, hold three minutes. Amy? I have what's being talked about.
Sorry, sir, could you say your name?
Oh, excuse me. My name is Jim Wire. I'm in Clyde Township. A lot of what is being talked about is what is proposed as if we could see into a crystal ball and see what's going to come. as if we could see into a crystal ball and see what's gonna come. I wanna talk about what's already been. Using recorded information from NOAA, from May of 1900 to April of this year, 123 years old, a 12-month average temperature increase was 5.7 degrees Fahrenheit. That's the equivalent of all these people standing here, sitting here, been walking out into the hallway, and there's 123 years of climate change. And to that I say, a cat bomb. The other thing is that the temperature that we're talking about has stayed an average of 47.3 degrees Fahrenheit. Which means this whole concept of climate change is perpetuated by the mass media, people that'll make money, the government, so that we can spend more money, so we can create more debt. But when all is said and done, it's not gonna happen. Michigan has historically been out of the top seven cloudy states. Michigan is seventh. So, we're gonna get sunlight, not that much. And when it comes to degree, when it comes to how much we're going to get, let's see, it's here somewhere. Oh yeah, the annual degree day, or the annual day of sunlight for Detroit, out of 365-day year, 75 of those days are sunny. But, there's 105 that are partly cloudy. Those partly cloudy ones that help make up the 180 days are either with 40% cloud cover, up to 70% cloud cover. And it's still considered sunshine. But one of the arguments that the power company is making is that we have growth. And because we have growth, we need more power.
And that's your time, thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name's Jane Hurdy. I live at 3567 Congress Street, Portland, Michigan. But I shop in your lovely township, Alack. And I also go to your parks. And I would like to add some to what the gentleman just said. This is definitely motivated by politically motivated money putting into environmental things. But climate change is the coming and going of an ice age. What people are talking about is climate change is just the normal fluctuations of weather. But that said, hopefully, big government can help the good people of this community. I'm wondering, in Fort Grashit Township, there is an eagle nesting on one of the communication towers, right where the rotary is on 136. There's also an offspring nesting in the park in Fort Grashit. And this is an international flyway of migrating birds. And a lot of eagles nest in Black River. They come to the lake to fish in the summer and during the winter, all the time. In the summer, they fly over this area. This thing should be west of Black River. Was an environmental impact study done on the birds? Because these things heat up the atmosphere. They're not gonna hurt the rabbits or the deer under them, but they are gonna hurt the birds. Birds see these things and they think they're water and they will fly into them. Also, heat is generated by them and they kill a lot of birds. A lot has been written about this. And are you people unaware of all the migrating birds that go through here and would be attracted to this? One reason, hunting started out on the lake, out in front of where I live. Just a couple of people, handful of them. There should be thousands of birds out there. But when they're hunting, they all leave and they're in new land ponds here and overtaxing things. But anyway, these birds go back and forth, right over this because where the sandbars is where the birds like to be. And lawsuits are very, very expensive. And have you people consulted with the EPA on this? So maybe big government will save us here with the bird situation because that's very, very serious. And these things kill birds. And this is just a really inappropriate place to put them. So, that's it.
Is there a Dave Wire here? 30 something? Handwriting, handwriting's on my notes, should I apologize? Can I also have Kelly Peters on deck? Kelly Peters, 4660, Kerrigan? Sorry, Dave.
Sorry. My name is Dave Wire, attorney here in town. And I represent Nellisville Solar Inc., which is a nonprofit corporation. I don't plan on talking about climate change or things of that nature. One of the issues I think we have is that this is a public hearing, not a public comment. And I noticed, I think we've been here twenty-five hours, so we don't need more time. But the public comment is limited to three minutes. I don't believe a public hearing, per se, is limited to three minutes. And the reason I say that is that if whatever the ruling is tonight, that has to be appealed, if it's appealed. And I have submitted our, as per the, you notice, our objection to various exhibits at the township hall by 4:30 this afternoon. I'm assuming, in all fairness, you guys, you not see those. And assuming that, and all I'm saying is I don't think that, in fairness to you folks, you can make a decision on this matter tonight. I do understand there is an ordinance in place and therefore you're dealing with the ordinance. The comment about the decommissioning of the project, you're gonna get a bond from somebody like Citizens First Savings Bank that in 40 years will be out of business, they won't be around. So I think if you get to the point of addressing the approval, you have to look at the conditions and those criteria. But I don't think you get there to even start with because when you look at your ordinance, and you look at the special use permit requirements, you have to find that this is consistent with the maintenance of the public health, safety, and welfare. I have gone around some parts of the township. I don't know if there are too many fire hydrants on Coal Road. I don't know if too many fire hydrants on Redchaff Road, west of State. So obviously, there's an issue if there's a fire out there. But I don't know what the concept of these solar panels is. Clearly, when you look at the properties, there are 17 properties, but you cannot make one decision. You have to make 17 decisions. Because you have to look at how each one of these properties consists, fits within the zoning ordinance and the special use. So you have to determine each property because you cannot look at the properties in Section 17, which somewhat, but Spartan Drive, with the properties up in the northwest corner, which I think the one individual said she's the epicenter out on Coal Road. Those are totally different situations, totally different parcels, and you have to look at each one of them separately. So you have to make a finding that each one of the parcels is consistent with the health, safety, and welfare of the community, that they are in harmony with the community. I understand that Fort Grashit Township is not a six-mile.
That's your time, thank you.
No. No. No.
No. It's three minutes. Thank you.
Three minutes, just on a public hearing or a public comment?
This is public comment.
When does the public hearing start?
We open the public hearing before we start the public comment.
Well then, when was the hearing opened to the public? This is the public hearing, not a public comment.
We are doing public comment as part of the public hearing.
Well then, I understand, but I have a right to a public hearing. Under the statute, there's a public hearing. This is the public hearing.
Okay. So, we open the public hearing. Under the Open Meetings Act, we have a right to set limits on the time for public comment, which we did. We set it three minutes per person.
On the public comment portion?
Correct.
Correct. Now with the public hearing, we're in the public hearing portion. I simply wanna make my record and the record of my client so that if, depending on the ruling, there is a record because that is what this, if it goes to Circuit Court on appeal, it's on the record.
You've made your record and you have provided the information and we will review that.
Should I still?
You can't.
There's still yielding time.
Thank you though. But you can certainly speak, it's your turn.
Well, thank you for my public hearing.
Can I have Kelly Peters, 4660, Kerrigan? Kelly Peters? Is Kelly Peters here? Can I have Libby Prill, 6177, Tripp Road?
Good evening. Okay, I did some research. Ranger Energy is a relatively new company. I think it's about five years old. It has a reputation for strong-earning local legislative bodies against the will of communities to make a quick profit. They use multiple shell companies and dirty tricks to capitalize on government subsidies. They move the responsibility of the project to other corporations and move on. They mislead the community about the size and number of parcels involved, which we heard earlier was the case, is that some people are just getting noticed. Because some people have just received offers. There have been complaints lodged against Ranger Power for using non-union, non-certified workers building these projects. And you pick community members against each other, resulting in residents being harassed, including in some cases in other areas, there were actually residents who were docked. If you play that dirty, you are not here for the community good. Aside from the meticulous claim that you are agriculture, that was insulting, it was insulting to anybody living in a farm community. You claimed that you harvest energy. That's ridiculous. And also, you know the pollinators that you referred to? They're already here. You're not giving us anything, we already have pollinators. And you know what you really draw though? And I'm surprised it hasn't come up. In my research, I found that there is an issue with rodents. Rats and mice, they like to nest under warm panels, particularly in winter. So I suggest that when you're planting all that yarrow and milkweed for the pollinators, you better be planting some mint because you're gonna need to have to address the rodent population. I can't wait to look across from noisy solar inverter and trade the beauty of cornfields, woods, and birdsong for an eyesore, said no one ever. A handful of landowners will rake in some extra cash and it's going to be at the expense of the quiet culture of thousands of hard-working residents who will lose their lifestyle to noise, rodents, and eyesore. You won't put it on light or redevelop urban areas because it's more expensive. It cuts into the billions of dollars in earnings that come to big energy through these projects. Green Township, Speaker Township, Fremantownship, they made it clear. Elected officials who fail and narys out responsibility to represent the electorate better take note. You will not only not be re-elected, you will be recalled. The people hired you and we will fire you.
What's your name, Libby? Okay, thank you, Libby. Can I have Tiffany Turk? Tiffany Turk, 4495 Indian Trail. And I also have on deck Scott Smith. Scott Smith, 7762 Kitchen Row.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Turk. I'm a Chinese Township resident. First off, as a local dairy farmer, I have to respectfully disagree with the gentleman, first gentleman that spoke, that the view of solar panels is the same as the view of cattle or cash crops. It's absolutely not. I would encourage each of you to deny this special land use request. This meeting was rescheduled once because the size of the crowd and turnout was unexpected. You gave us a bigger venue and we have filled this one as well. I can tell you from someone who's very involved with local politics, it's hard to get people to come to you in one meeting, let alone two. If this is the crowd you have here, I can assure you this is just a fraction of the people who are opposed to this project. People are sick and tired of their local government completely ignoring them. Green Township has recently recalled their entire board for their support over the much-opposed Ocean Battery Plan. Judging by this crowd and the fact that this township failed the poster planning commission meeting minutes for so long, intentionally leaving people in the dark, I would say your township board and this commission is on very thin ice. An article from August of this year states that by 2030, the US alone could log 1 million tons of waste from decommissioned solar panels. You can read article after article about the toxicity of these panels. I don't know how you could consider approving this project with so many potentially dangerous unknowns to us and our children and the countless people who addressed you this evening. Take a stand for your constituents and say no to this request. God isn't making any more farmland, so do your best to preserve it as a commission. So our little ones have clean air to breathe and safe water to drink and safe land to farm for generations to come.
I have Rachel Henin on deck. 3691, Muna.
Hi, I'm Scott Smith. I'm from Hills Township. I noticed tonight I've already been lied to right off the bat. No harmful materials in this, that's a lie. Does everybody here know what the global levels is on CO2s? Does anybody? You know what global level of CO2 is now? You don't, man. It's .04. .02, everything dies. So, we're not that far off. With our coal power plants, one guy says coal, rather than coal than these solar panels, all the raw materials are dug up in China by diesel fuel. They're manufactured over China. They have no regulations on any emissions. And you're trying to enforce these regulations on the United States. They get away with it, Scott, great. This is all about lying in somebody's pockets. And damn USA's, we the people are getting pissed off. If you guys put this in, that'd be a need and you will start something going on in here. I suggest you shut this down. Whatever it takes to produce these things, it'll never... You need to shut this down. I asked you guys to do a nice experiment for electromagnetic fields. Take two identical house plants in your house. Feed one water out of your tap. Take the same water, microwave it for one minute. Let it go back down, water the other one. See what happens to it. It's dead. That's what all this is about. I wanna say for my grandkids, we lived off in farm country. You know, there's one farmer that, the first one that got up and spoke, said he didn't have a problem, he wasn't opposing it. That's not a farmer. If he was a farmer, he would plant dirt and feed the whole community.
That's right.
Gotta sell him out to these friggin' solar panels and fuckin' money in his pocket. That is not a farmer in my opinion, but...
Rachel Henin? Rachel Henen, Rachel Henen, 3691 Palina. And I have Monica Van Camp, 27 Deer Creek, Monica Van Camp. And I have Kendall Richardson come up, 5664 Deno. Kendall Richardson. Can I also have Danielle Warner on deck, 4476 Pole Road? Danielle Warner.
Hello, I'm Kendall Freiberg, I am 13 years old. I am the future. I am here tonight to ask the Township Land Commission to vote no to the industrial solar farm. I'm here tonight to ask you to protect my future and the future of other children in Fort Gresham Township. I have been raised on my grandparents' farm on Gold Road, the industrial solar panel farm that surrounds the land of my grandparents' home. I love our family farm with all my heart. My little brothers have spent hours playing outside there. The idea of an industrial solar panel farm surrounding us on all sides breaks my heart. We love the community that surrounds us. The farmland, the wildlife, our wetlands, and great lakes in front of all are precious to us. These are all areas that stand to be harmed by industrial solar panel, put into place on almost half the agricultural land in our township. Once this agricultural land is turned into an industrial waste, there will be no going back. According to invited mentors, John Mayne, when the last tree is cut, the last fish killed, the last river poisoned, then you will see that we can't, that you can't eat mine. I urge you to think about this tonight as you make your decision. I have watched my grandparents educate many people in Fort Gresham about this proposed project. They have been going door-to-door in Fort Gresham, spreading awareness on this project and every minute of their spare time over the last few weeks. I have seen a lot of people who do not wish this for our community. Unfortunately, you have, I have also heard some people tell my grandparents that the very good of the people is not what is driving the township's choices on this matter. All of that is being considered is money, and not what's healthy or a solid plan for our community and its future. I am praying that this isn't true. I'm praying that my voice is the voice of other people that surround me tonight, asking for you to consider what is best for the community as a whole, not just a few who are hurt. Jonas Salt has said that eventually we will realize that if we destroy the ecosystem, we destroy ourselves. Let us not put these words into a state of reality. Please protect our ecosystems, protect our health, and protect our future, and vote no tonight. Thank you.
Are you Danielle?
Yes.
Okay, can I have Diane Hewlett on deck? Diane Hewlett, 13. Oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Uh, can I have Brian Martin, 4128 Buckley, on deck?
Hi, I'm Danielle Warner, I live on Pole Road. I want to speak to you because I have a special needs child who has severe problems behavioral. I am concerned about the solar panels coming in because they're shiny and bright, the noise. This is gonna increase behaviors. I do OTPT speech, behavior therapy. I take her to CNH, she does respite 15 hours a week. She is adapted. We are going to U of M for genetic testing. My life is nothing but therapies. In the winter, we go to friendship circle so she can play with other kids with her mates. She also has a issue where she doesn't know when it comes to her safety. I have cameras in my house to alert me when she escapes the house. We have alarms, we have everything imaginable to keep her safe, but she still escapes and visits neighbors, who then calls us, which they're wonderful neighbors. But, with these panels coming in, she's eight. And I can't be there every second. I have to take a shower, I have to use the bathroom, I have to make dinner. I need you guys to rethink this situation, because I will have every single one of you accountable if something happens to this child. Sinclair County was kind enough to put a handicap child sign up, but certain farmers fly down the street at high speeds and doesn't care about my child's safety. We have people that fly down the street all the time, but I'm now looking at you to think about my child's safety now. It's a community effort when it comes to special needs children, right?
Yes.
And she's adapted, which my husband and I are busting our butts right now, trying to make sure she's safe. So, this is on you to help us. And you should be ashamed of yourselves for coming into the community to think about this.
I'm Brian Martin, 4128 Buckley Drive. I'm a Libra. I guess my comment is more economics. I hate it when we give a handful of money to a company that can't stand on their own feet to do a job which it should be self-supporting. I mean, we're giving a million dollars away to people that are using it basically so that we can pay them, again, when we pay our utility bills. So, mine is all economics. And if you look at the, what's going on in China with these solar panels, China is one of the biggest polluters in the world, and they've got us hamstrung with our own laws so that they can get away with polluting, while we cannot pollute and we have to get rid of all of our energy sources so that we can buy their solar panels, so that we can go even more in debt. So that's, mine is more economics than anything. And also, wasn't it, isn't there an environmental study for the property that they're gonna do this? Isn't that required? And did anybody do an environmental study of the property? Specifically Doe Creek? Who lives along Doe Creek? Did they tell you there's PFASs in there? I know about PFASs because I was in the Marine Corps, and every lawyer in the country wants to get a hold of me so that I can sue them for, sue the Marine Corps for being exposed to PFASs. Fortunately, I was a San Diego Marine, not a Camp Lejeune Marine, but we've got PFASs in a drain in Doe Creek, which should certainly preclude them from building on that property until they find out where it came from and when it's gonna be cleaned up. And that ends my time.
Debbie Wolf, 5631.
Oh, thank you. I'm Debbie Wolf. I live on Luntwa Road at St. Campbell Township. I work in Clyde Township, and I play here in Fort Gresham Township. I grew up between a cornfield and a soybean field, and I am pro-saving our planet. And I am pro-renewable energy, and I oppose to this project. I'm all for green energy, but I will not destroy green spaces in the name of green energy. The main reason I'm against this is because our state is pushing it too fast for the technology available. And as attorney Randy Martin talked about, the laws being passed even today, did you know by 2040, our state is mandating we go to all renewable energy? That means our coal plants close down. That means our natural gas closes down. That's what I heat my home with is natural gas. Now, we can keep our natural gas if our technology can keep up to capture 95% of the carbon for 2040, otherwise, we're out in the cold, literally. A nonprofit out of Wisconsin predicts six blackout days a year in Januaries. It's cold in January, it's dark in January when the power's out. And for this less reliable energy, our costs are estimated to grow up $2,700 a year, $200 a month, to pay for being cold and dark. Our state is also taking away, or has taken away, the protections that you try to give us. From all across the state of Michigan, they took the power from our local governments and they gave it to three people, the Michigan Public Circus Commission. Those three people took over all of your jobs for protecting us. Those three people are not elected, those three people are appointed by the state of Michigan. They are not accountable to our voices. The protections that you offer have a lot to do with decibel ratings and what we hear. If you get out your phones right now and you pull up EPA and decibels, you'll read that 55 decibels is annoying and it disturbs outdoor activities. You can also see the end-of-life solar panel regulations and solar panel hazardous waste, about the millions of tons of hazardous waste that will be in the garbage. Again, what the state's doing, in this project, you stated about 1,000 acres of land, 500 direct-on panels. In the Senate Committee, Senator Dan Lowers asked a gentleman how much land these panels would take in the future? 209,000. If that same ratio applies, that could be 400,000 acres of our farmland. And I tell you, people, our fight tonight is not against this board, it is not against Ranger Power, it's against our state and our federal government. And as a Christian woman, God has given us dominion to take care of this earth. So, take care of it, keep up the fight, and go home tonight and turn off a couple lights.
Kendall Freiberg, you just up here? Can I have Karen Ahern, 3837 Spartan? Karen Ahern? Um, and... Um, and then, can I have Dwayne Lewis on deck?
Go ahead. I'm Karen Ahern, 3837 Spartan, glad. You want special permission to build a solar industrial complex within our beautiful township. Notice that I did not call it a solar farm. Farm implies something warm and fuzzy, and this industrial complex that you are proposing is anything but warm and fuzzy. Over 60 townships and counties have written a letter saying that they want local control to continue rather than being state-mandated. Fort Gresham's not on that list. Why not? After that attempted meeting in October, I've spent hours researching industrial solar projects like the one proposed. I watched the county commissioners' meeting where Ranger Power was invited to answer questions. The county does not have jurisdiction over this project, but instead needed to know about the makeup of these proposed solar panels. You were asked six different times whether or not the panels you plan to install in our township had heavy metals in them which would make them toxic after their lives end. You danced all around that question each time you were asked, six different times. If you cannot answer no to that question, then the answer must be yes. There must be toxic heavy metals in the panels that you are proposing. I was told that your application is in compliance with the new ordinance. It is also my understanding that in that application, you only have to say that you are installing solar panels. You don't have to divulge where you are buying those panels or what's in them. It was explained to me that it would be no different than a new store installing shelves. We wouldn't ask them where the shelves come from, and I find this to be a little bit different than that. China will hold more than 80% of the world's solar manufacturing capacity through 2026. China does not have the same standards we do. We will not be able to get parts for these panels when they break. And who knows what's in them? We certainly didn't get the answer to that during the county commissioners' meeting. You visited the industrial solar project in Chiauasi, which was built by the same company. It's my understanding that you were impressed with that project. That shocks me. The buffer that is supposed to protect the citizens from having to see that mess was embarrassing. The little bushes that they planted, some of which were dead, did nothing to hide that monstrosity. We are considered the blue water area. We live next to streams, rivers, and lakes. We drink from our wells. We don't want your toxic mess in our water systems. And then there's the noise, the constant noise, the noise that goes 24/7, the noise that does not stop at the edge of the property. It cannot be contained. You have three things to consider. One, compliance with the ordinance, which you are saying is done. Two, consider individual property owner's rights. We are not just talking about a farmer's rights. We are talking about every ownership, or every owner in this township. The many negative effects of this project do not stop at the edge of the farmer's property. Is this project, number three, for the greater good of the community? The answer to that is no, unequivocally no. We the people do not want your hazardous mess next to us.
Can I have Judy Wilton on deck? Judy Wilton, 5050 Parker.
I'm Dwayne Lewis, 5570 North Road. I support this project. We have done our research thoroughly, and we would not put our family at risk, nor the health of our soil at risk. Thank you.
My name's Judy Wilton, and I live at 5050 Parker Road. And I'm disappointed in this group tonight because I'm hearing that there were 200 meetings, and I was unaware of any of these meetings. So, I'm really disappointed in this group tonight. Article 15, Section 38 of the Fort Gresham Charter Code ordinance states that the proposed use of land will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is to be located. I have a report from Mary McClinton Clay, a commercial real estate appraiser, who did a study on the home values of residences that surround a solar field. And what she concluded was that the values of homes that are around a solar field diminished at least 6%, all the way up to 30%. And she said, "Real estate appraisers recognize that view affects property value." And according to the appraisal of real estate, the physical characteristics of a parcel of land that an appraiser must consider are size, and slope, frontage, topography, location, and view. Not only did she find the values of homes diminished, but that soil scientists noted that the data shows that solar panels channelize water, causing it to leave the site faster and infiltrate neighboring properties, and that some farmers have confirmed their fields have become wetter than before. And the property on Kerrigan Road already has water issues. Solar is a very dirty energy. China makes up 80% of the polysilicon from the slave labor of the Uighurs in China, and most of the panels end up in a dump. And these panels contain toxic chemicals such as polysilicon, lead, cadmium, selenium, and silver. And remember Article 15, Section 38, and what I said earlier? That's the Fort Gresham Charter Code, and it states again, I'm gonna repeat it again, "The proposed use of the land will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it's located." And this proposal does cause injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood, and I urge all of you to vote no.
Fran Naruda, 3549 Whitelane. She's not here. Did somebody say that anywhere? Um, so, these few did not mark whether they wanted to speak or just wanted their opinion read, so I will, if you want to speak, come up when I say your name. I might have Martha Smith, 5230 Worth Road. Martha Smith. It was marked as opposed. Thomas Brown, 3611 Angus. Thomas Brown. It was opposed. Nancy Borkovich, 3895 Spartan. Nancy Borkovich. Opposed. Cheryl Goodrich, 3338 Sapphire. Cheryl Goodrich. Opposed. Debbie Northrop, 4028 Bonestiel. Oh, you're, okay. Debbie? Debbie? Opposed. Brittany Tramsky, three-two-four-five, South Shoreview. Brittany Tramsky. Opposed. Lynn Schroder, three-nine-four-five, Vincent. Lynn Schroder. Opposed. I think this might be a PM, three-six-one-six, Carrigan. PM. Opposed. Jeff Kendrick, three-two-three-four, South Shoreview. Jeff Kendrick. Opposed. Patrick Yuncio, Rammett. Amanda Schwanger, four-three-two-five, Carrigan. Opposed. Kennedy Soyer, four-three-two-five, Carrigan. Opposed. Gary Dis... Dysoner? Four-zero-nine-one, Cole. Opposed. Alyssa Fair, four-one-oh-five, State. Opposed. Richard Law, five-four-four-six, State. Opposed. Okay. Do you want to start them? Do you want to start reading the other? Okay. Do you need to do my addresses? Lauren Martin, opposed. Aenee Quickly, opposed. William Harvey, opposed. Sally Brushing, opposed. Mary Gerstein, opposed.
I just want to say something for my wife. She has a heart condition, so she can't get up right now. She just has one sentence to say. She just wants you to know, do not sell your souls. That's all she wanted me to say.
Randy Gerstein, opposed. Neil Party, support. Cheryl Martin, opposed. Ryan Martin, opposed. Ryan Tramsky, opposed. Stephanie Mulsey, opposed. Stephen Osborne, opposed. Crystal Moser, opposed. Rachel Lohnen, opposed. Kristen Richardson, opposed. F. Hanger, opposed. Robin Burton, opposed. Shel Barton, opposed. Jacob DeFrain, opposed. Sean Spanger, opposed. Yell Wormliner, opposed. Ryan O'Henry and Lynn. Alpha Maplewood, opposed. Hubert Tahini, opposed. Patricia Sonas, opposed. Elizabeth Somerville, opposed. Austin Kendrick, opposed. Karen Dension, opposed. Fred Sar, opposed. Sandra Ensworth, opposed. Dylan, opposed. Eric Kemp, opposed. Ann Kemp, opposed. Susan Smith, opposed. Christopher Smith, opposed. Jason and Julie Moberich, opposed. Ryan Hart, opposed. Tammy Sannenberg, opposed. Don Matthews, opposed. Mandy LaSalle, opposed. Danny Owen Senior, opposed. Nina Garcia, opposed. Dennis Joeykey, opposed. Diane Hojnan, opposed. Dwayne Toggenbaugh, opposed. Michelle Toggenbaugh, opposed. Amy Hampton, opposed. Dwayne Sor... Sorbo, opposed. Nancy Selsey, opposed. James Warner, opposed. Sharon DeLuca, opposed. James DeLuca, opposed. Colin Brunel, opposed. Alicia Hudson, opposed. John Stuber, opposed. Alex Stuber, opposed. Jacob Helbeck, opposed. Catherine Kuzback, opposed. Zach Sukuski, opposed. Linda Butler, opposed. Peter Lisinski. Support for the opposed to solar next to Wildlife Area. Anne Brown, opposed. Laura Campbell, opposed. Richard Breton, opposed. Robert Brunel, opposed. Crystal Wachell, opposed. Kat Wachell, opposed. Linda Kincaid, opposed. Ron Kincaid, opposed. Christine Hudon, opposed. Dan Camphausen, opposed. Audrey Baer, opposed. James Buckley, opposed. David Werner, opposed. Ellen Haylick, opposed. Billy Romano, opposed. Steve Mooney. She's not having an opinion. Carolyn Guzdala, also opposed. Susan Borkovich, does not have an opinion. Marilyn Reagan, opposed. Jake Warner, opposed. Joanne Hastings, opposed. Barry Smith, opposed. Kurt Sabre, opposed. Shel Seberg, opposed. Linda Wall, opposed. Cheryl Norris, opposed. Anna Booby, opposed. Carolyn Hale, opposed. Donald Ruk... Rukovis, opposed. Robert Hale, opposed. Gilbert Tucker, opposed. Mark Copper, opposed. Lynn Cuppen, opposed. Gwen Rukowski, opposed. Michael Delong, opposed. Rene Mason, opposed. Leslie Mason, opposed. David Mason, opposed. Larry Johnson Senior, opposed. Carl Johnson, opposed. Ronda Riley Miller, opposed. Mary Riley, opposed. Don Warden, opposed. Mark Falk, opposed. Laura Brucker, opposed. Ross Dysoner, opposed. Tamara Barber, opposed. Lois Bieber II, opposed. Thomas Upstate Road, opposed.
My name's Tom Campbell, five-one-three-one, State Road. I don't live too far from the proposed field. I, me and my wife and her family, had a horse farm for, uh, over fifty years. We've lived there forty years. Her parents have probably lived forty years. And, uh, the beauty of a farm and what you do with it with horses, cows, crops, and all of that is really precious to me, my family, and that. The solar panel farm, I don't agree with it. There's nothing beauty about it. If a lot of what these people have said here about the noise, I'm definitely going to hear it because I'm only two farms away. And, uh, just, I oppose of it, and there's nothing beauty about a solar farm. All the sunlight coming through on it, what they say it's going to heat the property up or their surrounding areas, and that's all I got to say. Thank you, and I hope the board doesn't agree with this.
Susan Toose, opposed. Kristi Carco, opposed. Suzanne Tucker, opposed. Dan Carco, opposed. Dave Dear, opposed. Lynn Dear, opposed. Ann Sharp, opposed. Ralph Roberts, opposed. Andy... Are you Ralph? Yeah. Well, yeah. Can you wait until you're up to the microphone, please? Just state your name.
Ralph Roberts, living Port Huron. My farm friends, what gas do plants give off? What gas?
CO2.
Oxygen.
Oxygen. What do they need to get oxygen, make oxygen?
Carbon dioxide.
CO2, and they're complaining about CO2 in the environment. That one gentleman said it was about four percent. We're getting close to losing our plants because we don't have enough CO2 in the environment. Get the coal plants going, get our cars going, let's get some more CO2 in our environment.
Howard Moran II, opposed. Dennis Mitchell, opposed. Sherry Darwin, opposed. Kate Price, opposed. Richard West, opposed. Lindsay West, opposed. Tricia Roberts, opposed. And Kylie Worthman, opposed.
I also have Lori Matthews, opposed. Joseph Matthews, opposed. And Bonnie Hanson, opposed. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
It has been moved in support. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same? Hearing none. The motion carries. We will close at nine twenty-seven. At this time, we're going to take a brief recess. We will shoot for...
Flash the light.
I know, not... Give me another minute to stretch him.
If you folks can start making your way into your seats, we'll get things going ahead.
I'm walking, I won't be at my first stand, but I'm not calling it. I'm calling it my load I have to do tomorrow. Are you recording? I'm already recording.
I would need to... I write one of those...
Yes.
I'm sure what's going on with that one that's written on the white paper there.
Very well.
They're all the right names.
Apparently, we missed a couple of cards, so we're going to read a couple three that we missed.
I have Don Rukowski, opposed. Glenn Rukowski, opposed. Ron Kincaid, opposed.
So, I guess I just want to talk a little bit about the state legislation. Apparently, while we were sitting here, it made it through the House. It is just waiting for the governor's signature, which is probably going to happen next week. Our ordinance, I respectfully disagree with a couple of comments made earlier. Our ordinance is more restrictive in several ways. Our ordinance requires screening. The state statute is silent-esque screening. Our ordinance requires the decibel level of forty-five decibels. The state statute is at fifty-five, so they allow more noise. The decommissioning plan, our ordinance requires that the bond or surety for decommissioning be funded one-hundred percent at the time of construction. The state statute requires that the bond pay for one-hundred percent of the decommissioning after ten years of operation. So, the only thing that the state statute beats us on is the setback requirement for the panels. Our ordinance is at one-hundred feet from dwellings. The state statute is at three-hundred feet, but as part of our approval process tonight, we can include conditions which would increase that setback as well. So, I just, I wanted to just make everyone aware that, you know, when we started this last month, the threat of the state taking away local control was theoretical, and it is not theoretical anymore. We're just waiting for the governor's signature.
It doesn't matter.
This is not a talk. This is not a... We're not having a discussion. I'm sorry. It's board discussion right now.
Why are you talking about?
You know I answered a question.
How much have you taken from this in your own pocket?
Folks, I can touch on that.
As Kevin from Waleshead commented, I would just friendly remind everyone that the people sitting on this board, six of them have chosen to be appointed. We're not elected officials. We decided to be involved in our community, possibly regretfully after this meeting, but we are here to be involved. Folks, can I talk over you? Let me talk, and then if you want to yell, you can, okay? Just let me talk. We are involved with our community because if you look at the decades that we have all lived here, it is many, 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 okay? There have been meetings with the planning commission, and three people are there, and Culvers wants to come in. Everybody loves Culvers. It's on Twenty-Fourth. We approve it, that's it. I am a believer in freedom of speech and power of the people. Again, I'm only speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the board. When you have a meeting of this size and this many people come out against it, it is something that I have to consider, sitting on the board, as a responsibility of my neighbors. Someone said you have to go to church with them and shop with them. I do believe in that strongly. I do believe in that strongly. The, the House bill is definitely something that's concerning to me as far as taking the power away from the people, because that's what it looks like to me. That's not something that I can control this evening. I understand the, their rules and our rules, but it's just, it's something I have to move tonight, what's in front of me and what's here, is how I feel about it.
I guess I'll make a couple comments. I did make the drive to Chiawassee County, and I saw exactly what you folks saw. The noise was atrocious. It wasn't very loud. I backed up down the road probably 1,000 feet, could still hear it. I have pictures on my phones of the landscaping, if you want to call it that. It's non-existent. Tiny, tiny little, I guess they're arid, half of them are dead. Gates are open. The access roads are in horrible condition, they're all rutted. There's water standing in them. It's a poor, horrible example of their model plan or whatever, their model project. Didn't like it at all.
I do have a question for Ranger Power. Is the, of all the projects that you have done, is this the largest that you have done? Or what is an average scale size that you usually do? If you could just give me around the boat, not specific, but...
Sorry about that. If, I want to make sure I answer your question correctly. If you are talking about acreage, I guess the answer is no. If you're talking about capacity at 100 megawatts, that answer is also no. It's not the largest. At this point, our largest operational project would be the Chiawassee County Assembly Solar Project.
And how many acres was that?
Roughly 1,900.
1,900.
And what percent, or what acreage had, came in on that, about 1,900?
Roughly 1,200.
1,200?
And was that put in all at the same time? Or was it, was the plan 1,200 from the get, or did it start lower and then worked its way up?
It was a three-phased project.
Three-phase project, correct.
Did each phase require additional approval?
There were, there were, sorry guys, there were two different approvals. One was granted in October of 2019, and the other was, sorry, January 2019, and the other approval was granted in spring 2020.
And there was a lot of talk about like the screening in Chiawassee. It was my understanding that that, they did not have the screening ordinance that we have, so that was kind of retroactive screening. So the screening that we've had on our ordinance would be maintained and from the beginning, is that correct?
We can definitely say, and similar to the comments about sound, we can definitely say that the township would have the ability to ensure that we are meeting the township requirements, which are stringent for both sound and screening.
Yeah, and I would just, yeah, like Toby pointed out, the township can enforce those requirements. I think Fort Grashit Township's screening requirements are much more robust than Fort Grashit, Chiawassee County.
That's right, oh, thank you.
As it was discussed from the residents who are quite passionate and did some research, can you say specifically where the solar panels are built? On this project? On this project, do you know where they'll be built tonight? We might know that until you get to that point, because it's wasteway.
We don't know that at this time.
Hey, come on. Please, guys, you are passionate, I appreciate it, but this is our turn. Please, please. After a meeting, I'll sit and talk to you all night long. Please.
We certainly don't make those kinds of extremely large investments prior to our permits are received, especially those that are critical for moving forward with the project, like a special land use permit. What I can say is that we fully expect those panels to be manufactured in the United States.
In Chiawassee, in the United States?
No. No, there's incentives now in a growing domestic manufacturing capacity. So there's a greater likelihood, there's more opportunity to use domestic manufacturing panels now.
Can you tell us how many other projects are in the works of looking at in Michigan as well?
I, I, at this time, I wouldn't be able to say off the top of my head. I think we're proposing this project here, but yeah, I don't know the exact number. I think it's around five to 10.
Are you the same team that does all of them, or is there different groups that are...?
Yeah, ourselves and our other coworkers here are responsible for developing those projects too.
There was a lot of talk about noise and obviously a lot of concern about noise. So when we're talking about the noise that the inverter emits, is that per inverter? Or what if we begin collectively looking at that, like people were looking at Chiawassee, does that change? Decibel or the tone or what we're hearing? With wireless inverters?
Citing our sound study that we provided, that was commissioned with Epsilon, it's, it would be measured from each inverter, and the sound is from the fans inside the inverter, cooling the inverter, and that would, that would occur during the day.
That doesn't take into account all of the inverters that would be on them?
It, what it takes into account is possible sound and does it meet the requirements of Fort Grashit's ordinance, which is 45 dBA at property boundaries, which we, according to the sound study, very clearly meet in this case.
But it does have to be every inverter within the site plan to ensure that it's compliant with that 45 dBA.
Correct. How many farms have you installed in the state of Michigan?
Sorry, could you repeat? I didn't hear farms. We have one operational, the Assembly Solar Project, it's three phases, totaling 239 megawatts. And then we have one project in Covlin County that's under construction, it's 150 megawatts.
But just those two right now?
That's right. Better, better operation or construction.
At any time in Chiawassee, was there any issue with the noise decibel to where that township checked and it was too loud? At any time?
Nothing that I'm aware of. Yeah.
Has an environmental study been done at this point by you, or even something comparable for like Chiawassee to address some of the environmental concerns?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and kick that over to our consultant, Atwell, who performed our environmental studies up here.
Yeah, Bert Thomas, Atwell, Vice President of Environmental Services of GAT. Just for everybody's knowledge, I've been doing environmental consulting in Michigan for 19 years. So started my, my first wind project doing environmental consulting was, environmental consulting was 2008. So quite experienced with both wind and solar. So what we've done for this project is we have completed desktop studies that look at, when they come to us with a project, we say, what is the overall habitat of this area before we do any underground surveys? So we've looked at historic land use, historic habitat modeling. We follow that up with a site visit. So we've done our wetland remediation. We've done our dangerous species assessment, and we will continue to coordinate with the Michigan Department of Environmental, Radio and Energy for all things related to wildlife, wetlands, and dangerous species.
The only thing I would add to that, Clyde Township's requirement, excuse me, Clyde Township's ordinance requires an environmental impact study that we completed for Clyde Township, and we've provided that to the planning commission as well. So we have completed an environmental impact study for at least the Clyde Township portion of this project. All of those studies that Bert talked about are cited in there among different places in Fort Grashit's, our application to Fort Grashit as well.
But the studies are paid by the Power Rangers.
I did have the opportunity to talk to John Morkovich, the DNR, he's not the DNR anymore, but you know, I mean, he spent a lot of time, spent a lot of time out in the woods, and he says that he was courted by some sort of animal companies to come onboard because of his clout and his knowledge, and he did not. He's pretty adamant of the visual, visual pollution, noise pollution, and just the balance of the ecosystem. His opinion is, once you disrupt that ecosystem, that's it.
Does he do?
He's, he's totally against it, totally against it. Once, you know, the hunters that have that land hunt, once those deer are gone and other animals, he said it's, it's very disruptive, which I found interesting, just because, I was going to say he would know, and he's usually doesn't, he doesn't pull any punches.
I guess for me, one thing that is less not desirable is how it kind of snakes through all of the agricultural land, that it's not compact, that we have so many adjacent parcels, requires so much additional screening. I feel like just the nature of the way that the parcel, the proposed development is, that it kind of cuts through.
It's a large area.
It is a large area, and the way, the shape of it, I guess, also seems to be additionally disruptive, I guess, to the area.
I agree. If you told me you were going to tear down the Bridgewater Mall and put them all there, that would be fine to me, right? No, because it's, it's already there. You know what I mean? This is just disrupting so much land.
But doesn't the, it's not a nice lead kind of parcel, I guess, in one location.
It's not like, hey, there's 10 acres of solar panels. It's, hey, here's this, just what you said, this danger of solar panels.
It just affects so many additional.
I've been driving for 10 minutes and I still see it.
And even one of the attorneys was saying, you know, really looking at them individually is...
You better pull up your microphone or we'll yell at you.
Sorry. You know, maybe future should be looked at individually on a parcel, you know, all combined in one, or like you said, all over the nature of the whole, whole stuff, and being so large.
I think the overriding, I guess, element that adds another layer to this is that legislation. I think we've heard very clearly that a no vote is what's wanted by people, but I think that even if we vote no today, that it does not necessarily end here, now that the state has done its part. I think it was Nance Richardson, if you're still here, Nance, that said, stop it while you can. I don't know that even if we say no tonight, that that actually stops it.
People are lancing them, that these people, you have to hold.
It doesn't mean that they wouldn't approve it.
No.
Either though, so depending on what is decided here, you know.
And I guess like I said, we've been on this board, and when the neighbor wants to put something in, and the other neighbor comes, and they're in support of it, when I walk away from the meeting, those two people live next to each other. If they're in agreement, then I'm good with it, right? It's how, it's how I look at things. So this evening, we have Ranger Power, who's just a company that puts in solar panels for a living, right? They're not, that's just what they do, right? That's just their business. We have five landowners that have an opportunity to keep their property, to keep it agricultural, and to make money per month. I can't fault those people either, right? And then our third group are all of these people here that have to live with it, so it's a, it's not an easy balance of what John Morkovich had said, this balance of commercial nature together is, I just don't see the balance of it.
And I, you know, there's still so much question of industrial versus farming and clarifications and who makes, you know, that description.
Right.
I think that's very alarming to everybody, because it does look and appear, you know, appear industrial to everybody because of the farming that we all know and love. It's different.
Correct.
So it is a big pivot, and I think that is kind of whatever I was talking about, you know, it may change the character of that space and that land.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's...
And another 20 years later, more being added for other property owners deciding to jump onboard, that's going to, we have to think of that as well, taking up a point of our priority. Can you speak to how the Chiawassee parcels were kind of put together, wasn't the same? I mean, you mentioned that it was, it's not, there's no eminent domain, it's just volunteers, and is that kind of how you decide what this is going to look like?
What I can speak to is the way that our projects come together, and it is a combination of existing transmission and voluntary participants. So I know, you know, unfortunately, we can't provide a square box of folks that are interested in participating, but that's also a positive, because we don't have eminent domain, we can't tell people what to do with their property. So if we have some folks that want to participate, some folks that don't, that's how these projects have to end up looking like, or else, like I said, we would be in that position where, I mean, in order to have that perfect square, that probably means that you're forcing folks to participate.
Yeah, we, like Toby said, we just kind of follow the interest of land where people are interested in participating in the projects. The Assembly Solar Project in Chiawassee County looked like, zoomed out pretty much like a four-mile north and south kind of oval donut.
What were the setbacks in Chiawassee?
In Chiawassee County, it was 200 feet from residences, 15 feet from roadways, and 40 feet from vacant, not participating parcels.
200 from residences?
200 from residences.
If you look on Google, it looks like some of those were, again, those houses pretty tight, so I would make it 200?
Yeah, from panels to residents to dwelling.
And in this, in this area too, we in our community have smaller parcels, as you all know, that is a bigger impact. It's not like panels are only going to be in the very center of a 15-acre parcel that is far away from everybody at that point. Do you consider that? Residential density areas?
Well, and that's the other point, right? Like, and again, this is not, this is not in front here, but this has been brought up, and it's something I think about. If you changed all of this agricultural land with a subdivision, it would change it, right? It would impact property values, but it would. You would not build a 500-acre subdivision overnight, unless you have subsidies from the government, and you were already profitable before you got there, right? Which is the reason where I live, on Hitchens, used to be a field, Spardon used to be a field, right? These are how towns are slowly built, right? This is going to be overnight, not in one day, but you know, very, very quickly, just like that, we're going to lose all of that land. Change the whole, the whole look and dynamic of our township. A great percentage of it. Not the whole thing, I apologize, but a great percentage of it. I just find that difficult to swallow.
I think even though there's not a lot of true value...
I think even though there's not a lot of true values with declining, just because we haven't had this in our area, but I've been with my background in the real estate area appraisal industry that I review appraisals, I have background finance side, and these are concerns with how it affects the market value and the neighboring parcels and everything else. We just, we don't have any proof at this time because there's not one realtor or appraiser that would say it definitely will or have hard facts too much yet in our area anyways. But just with all the, the market telling us of all the concerns, it's gonna affect people to move in our area because of that.
I totally agree.
It's good to see so many people turn off or something. To see more crowds meeting such as this, it's a lack in our society, it's really great.
I agree.
I'd just like to read something. This is directly out of the zoning ordinance. And in the zoning ordinance, under Division 2, Section 38 dash 141, AG Agricultural Districts, the statement of purpose raises the following. AG Agricultural Districts are those open areas of a township where farming, dairying, forestry operations and other rural activities are found. Vacant land, fallow land and wooded areas also would be included where such areas are interspersed among farms. Gradually, and I repeat the word gradually, and based upon logical comprehensive development plan, AG Agricultural Districts may be, may be converted to other land uses. AG Agricultural District protects land needed for agricultural pursuits from encroachment by untimely, unplanned residential, commercial and industrial development. Ordinance number 62, Section 7 dash 05 dash 01, 1984, so this has been in effect for about 40 years. And the way I see it, this 900 acre industrial project proposed to be installed in a very short period of time is not at all gradual, nor is it logical. It is untimely and not in harmony with the statement of purpose as written. This project will adversely affect the current character and future orderly development of Fort Grashit Township.
We're just at this, like I said, there's just so many variables, right? With the state bill, I'm totally against it, the state can just come into every single town and township in the state of Michigan, all 83 counties, and just say, this is what we're doing. I'm against that, but the people in Lansing look like they're for it, right? So if you say, we have somewhat control of it in this moment, but you don't know what's gonna happen, the bill is gonna pass, right? It's gonna pass, but things change too. I don't, I don't know. Wish I could predict the future. Yeah, it's definitely hard to say, right?
Vote no and see what happens.
I think the assumption is that if we vote no tonight though, that it is done and out of the state bill, we cannot be assured of that.
Can't the township?
It's on the conversation with us, I'm sorry, we appreciate your comments, but...
We heard you, we know you, we know you, we love you, we know you, we hear you, okay?
We're gonna slow them down.
There is a whole different manners that we need to look at.
It's my responsibility as a member of the planning commission to vote what's in front of me, that's my responsibility, right?
I think we've heard a lot, but it isn't. There are questions, I guess, about the harmonious nature in which it's going to fit in in the existing parcels. Is that what you were saying down there?
No.
I thought you were saying, Chuck? I couldn't hear the last part.
Can you repeat that? Where did that come from, that you pulled that information?
Right out of the ordinance.
No, no, I'm saying your last piece of thing, it wasn't character or was it not harmonious?
Did you read that, please?
I just asked him what he said in his last piece of his statement and I couldn't hear him, but it was character. Last, your statement, I was just gonna...
Can you repeat it?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
This 900 acre industrial project of solar panels proposed to be installed in a very short period of time is not at all gradual, nor is it logical. It is untimely and not in harmony with the statement of purpose as written. This project will adversely affect the current character and future orderly development of Fort Grashit Township.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess I make a motion.
I can?
Who has it? You are?
Me too.
Go ahead.
I'm the newest board member when I make a... I make a motion to deny based on Section 38 dash 486, number one. That is, it's not or will not be consistent with maintenance for the public health and safety and could cause harm and has not been demonstrated for many years forward. As well as Section 3, that it will not maintain harmony with the appropriate development of surrounding areas, the impact of land change will significantly affect the harmony. As well as Section 3B, they have not demonstrated that it won't significantly eliminate any possibility of nuisance amating to the occupants. Sorry, I can't read it already. As well as Section 4, it does not, it is not proven to promote the harmony, physical and economic aspects of adjacent land uses.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions or comments?
Could we add in at this point to, can I add something to your motion?
Sure.
I would think also the continuity of development, just is what Chuck had pointed out, and it just cuts through the, kind of the heart of that agricultural land, but it does change the continuity of future development. I don't think you mentioned that, did you?
No. Perfect.
Which is also in 4 again.
4, I'm sorry? I did read the 4. Say again, I'm sorry.
Continuity of development.
Continuity of development.
Yes.
I have to say. Sorry. Do you need it to be reread? Boy. Great. They always say, speak up. I make a motion to deny based on Section 38 dash 486, number one. It is not or will not be consistent with maintenance of the public health and safety and could cause harm and has not been demonstrated for many years forward. Number three, it will not maintain harmony with appropriate development of surrounding areas, the impact of land change will significantly affect the harmony. 3B, they have not demonstrated this won't significantly have any possible nuisance amating to occupants. Number four, it does not, it is not proven to promote the harmonious, physical and economic aspects of adjacent land uses. What did you say? And the continuity, of the, sorry, the continuity of development in need for particular services and facilities in areas of the township. Good? Local vote?
Back there?
Yes.
Hilton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mills? Beer? Yes. Obrina?
Yes.
Mordlinger?
Yes.
Motion passes. Because special land use has been denied, there really is no action required on the site line approval, I would entertain motion to adjourn.